Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 8th Select Board Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to invite anybody up for public comment.
My name's Jennifer Goldman. I'm 28 Jared Place in North Andover. So glad to see a full crowd. I'm thrilled to see that the Select Board is proactively supporting this initiative around the schools to vastly improve them. And I know that the major school initiatives are not your responsibility to coordinate nor lead. And I really want to thank you for coordinating this joint meeting, as I know everyone and your time is very stretched. I'm very confident that a detailed, thoughtful, and well-communicated improvement plan will be shared with the residents very soon. And I know that your skills of project management, architecture, finance, and negotiations and marketing and more are needed to move forward this school movement in a timely fashion. I also know that your, and especially you Rosemary's, passion is for this town and its health and its future. And you will do what's in our children's and our town's best interest. So I look forward to seeing the detailed plan as we head into 2022. And I know this share will build trust, awareness, and allow time for healthy discussions, for buy-in, and ensure a yes in May's town meeting. Thanks for all your hard work and your passion.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Thank you. We will move on to our first public hearing, which is the tax classification. Our public, the public hearing will determine, will be in accordance with General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, to determine the percentage of the tax, local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2022 tax rate. Our assessors here, Bill Mitchell, who is, will give us a presentation, and I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
And Chair, I'll move to open the public hearing in accordance with General Law. As Chapter 40, Section 56 has amended to determine the percentage of local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the FY 2022 tax rate.
A second? The motion and a second? All those in favor? Bill, your floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Select Board members. I appreciate the time you're taking tonight to see this. First, I just want to start off simple. I like to keep it very simple tonight because this can get very confusing if you're not an assessor and you're not in the field. So for the people viewing at home, I just want to show you on the website that tonight's presentation, you can go right to Departments, Administration of Finance, and then the Assessor page. And it's right there. FY 22 Classification Hearing is right on the website. So if anybody's viewing from home, they can get this presentation right on your screen there to follow along and view it afterwards if you have any questions. So I wanted to get that out of the way, and without further ado, we'll get into it. So like I said, we're here to look at the shifting of the burden, not so much as setting the tax rate, but I want to talk a little bit about the steps on how we got here tonight and then where we're going after tonight. So this is essentially how it works. Back in January, you determine through the budget process the amount of levy that you're going to raise through property taxes each year. And of course, in January, you might not know the exact amount because you're depending upon state aid, motor vehicle excise tax, and other fees and charges that come into the town. So that number is developed later on in the process, but you certainly have an idea at that point. While that's going on, the assessors are determining the valuations for all of the parcels in the town throughout the year. And that is through data collection, sales reviews, and other market analysis. And then we tabulate those assessed valuations into classifications, whether it be residential, commercial, industrial, personal property. And we classify those. And then we have to get valuation certification from the Department of Revenue, which we do, and that was done just recently, a couple of weeks ago. And so they approved our valuations. We go through a rigorous process to make sure that, or they make sure that we're doing our job correctly. We obtained the certification of new growth, and I'll explain that in the presentation in a minute. And then we're here tonight to present the classification options to the Select Board so they can make an informed decision, discuss some of the shifts, and then vote on how you want to shift the burden, which makes the most sense for the town to raise the levy. After that, you vote on the tax shift and sign the, what's called the LA5, either tonight, or Lynn will get in touch with you in the next day or so to get your signature so we can submit that to the Department of Local Services. So that's where we're at. And so first, I want to start out very simply with how we determine what we can raise each year, as I get questions throughout the year on how we determine what we can raise and where it starts from. So this particular example right here that you see on the screen is the starting point. And we always start with this last year's levy limit that you see there. And that's our base from prior year before we begin to figure out what we can raise this year. And so you can see our base last year was just over $80,705,000. We actually raised $80,582,000 from property taxes last year. And then you add 2.5% to that. That's that proposition, 2.5. And I get asked that a lot because a lot of people think that I'm doing unlawful things when their tax bill goes up by 2.5%. So I always try to explain to them, no, it's not your individual taxes. It's the amount of levy we can raise as a town. So just to point that out. And then what, the only thing that's allowed after 2.5% is new growth. And those are things that did not exist last year, which is the reason why it's able to be added to this year. And that's new construction, new subdivisions, new personal property that business or equipment might buy. And so you add those things up, and you come up with a subtotal or this levy limit amount right here. And then that is the amount you can raise. The only thing above that will be your debt exclusions, which is your annual debt service from prior year borrowings. And we did a high school project back in the year 2000, and the annual debt service for that this year is $309,000. So that is added to your levy limit. Then you end up with a maximum allowable levy that you can raise without a 2.5 override or an additional debt exclusion. And a lot of people ask about the difference between a debt exclusion and a 2.5 override. And the reason why you hear sometimes a 2.5 override being a permanent increase is because this amount right here, this $202,900,000 that you see on the screen, if that's increased, that raises this number, which ends up being the base for the next year. And that's the reason it's almost like a compounding interest, so to speak. So debt exclusion's always a, has been practiced here in town of North Andover. And it's good practice because once it's paid off, it goes off the levy. So that's how we got to it this year, is that levy limit right there, and the actual estimate is just under that. And so when we look at, the only other thing we look at is the levy ceiling. That's the maximum amount that a town can raise in any given year. And basically, that is the total valuation of the town times 2.5% or the maximum residential or taxable rate, which is $25 per thousand. So you can see the difference there is, was just over $83 million, and the levy ceiling's at $147 million. So it's quite a difference, but that's the maximum we could raise with a vote from the people of North Andover. And then excess levy capacity is the other term that you hear tonight. And basically, that's the difference between what we're allowed to raise, this levy limit, and then what we actually raise, this $83 million, which is estimated right now. So you can see, as we speak tonight, we're only leaving $1,498 on the table this year, which is very close to our levy limit. The reason for that is because I did decline a raise this year. Next year, I can promise that. So that's where we're at. And so to understand how we can shift the burden this year, what we do is we look at the makeup of the town. And so if everything's equal, this screen right here shows exactly what the residential, commercial, industrial, personal property class would raise of the levy. Currently, the town of North Andover is made up of about 87% residential properties. And so essentially, they raise 87% of the levy. And then about 12% is raised by the other classes. So that's if we were at a single tax rate of $14.20, which we're not. But if we were, that's, that's what each class would bear. If we were to shift the maximum amount, which is basically taking 50% and putting it on the commercial, industrial, and personal property, what that does is it allows the residential class to raise 81% instead of 87% of the levy. And then the commercial, industrial, and personal property comes out to about 19% instead of 12. So that's essentially what we're doing. We went from a single to a maximum shift. And you can see the resulting tax rates there go from $1,420 down to $1,317, and then from $1,420 up to $2130 for the CIP class. So that's what you're wanting to decide tonight. And this table here shows the potential for each shift. What you want to pay attention to is these two columns right here, which are the resulting tax rates. But then, most importantly, I'll show the actual tax bills and what they will do as we go on. So you can see here that this shift is one, which means everybody's at the same amount. 100% of your value is, is what you're going to pay on. And then as we go down this list right here, you can see that if we add 10% to the CIP class, you get a decrease of about 1.5% on the residential class. So you can see, because 87% of this community is made up as residential, you have to shift quite a bit before it makes a difference. And so these just keep going for you to, so you can understand, at this point, we've got a 20% shift, and we go down by 3% on the residential factor. And then essentially, 30% down to about 4.5% decrease. And then 1.4 to 0.94, and then the max, like we talked about. So to summarize, this is where we stand right now as a town. We are currently at a 1.30 shift, which means we've taken 30% and added it to the commercial, industrial, and personal property and decreased it by about 4.5% on the residential side. So currently, our, our tax rates are at $1,417 in 1929. And then you can see what happens to them as we look at the shift. These are some of the valuations, what happened this year, and this is what happens when we have shifts of valuations. You're going to see that some of the burden has shifted between classes. The average single-family home is now worth $607,000 in the town of North Andover, which is very close to the average commercial property of $689,000. But the average industrial property is worth about $2.4 million. So quite a difference there. And just, just in case anybody wants to know here, because I wrote these down, when we're looking at the value ranges, just to give everybody an idea of what happened in the valuation of real estate this year, the single families went up about 8.5% this year. Condominiums went up about 4.1%. Two to three families went anywhere from 7% to 12% higher. Apartment buildings went up by 26%. Land went up by 10%, commercial went up by 5%, and industrial went up by 33% valuation. So that's when it ends up shifting the burden, is just valuations themselves. And so here's some of the historical tax rates, where we begin and where we're at right now. And then this is, this is what we've done historically with the residential share. And this graph looks like it's all over the place, but one thing you've got to look at is the range is really only about 2% between these two lines. So we're up at 83.8, down to about 82.3. And then the commercial, industrial, you can see that changes a little bit more. We're at about a 12% change there. And so to get into the crux of the matter here, this is what happens with the tax bills this year. So right now, we're at a 1.3% shift. And the residential, average single-family home would go up about $303 if we stayed there. The commercial would only go up about $69, but keep in mind, that's because the commercial values did not go up as much as the residential values. And then the industrial values went up quite a bit, so they see an increase of about $11,000. And so we're lying in between this, this area right here is where we're at. If you go up to a 1.32 shift, you can see that the increases in the tax bills are about the same between commercial and residential at that point. And so it just depends on where you want to be and how much of an impact you want to make on each particular class. These are some other considerations. Like, we looked at the tables. This is a summary. As we look, if we go down to a 1.2% change, you can see the residential tax bill goes up by about $431, but the commercial goes up by, goes down by $909. That's because we're shifting the burden back on to the residential class. And you can see the difference in what happens there. And then if we go the other way and go into a 1.5% shift, you can see that the residential bill still goes up about $54, but the commercial goes up about $2,000. So those are the resulting actions of what happens there. This is an example of your vote that you might take tonight. And what you want to pay attention to on the presentation is these two numbers right here. Whether you want to shift the residential factor of about .9536 or CIP of 1.32, that would be the vote that you want to make tonight. Or you can change those depending upon where you want, or if you have any questions. The other things that I'm happy to talk about, if you need it, it's not, been historically adopted here in the town of North Andover, would be the residential exemption, the small commercial exemption, or the open space exemption. If you have any questions on those, I'll be happy to talk to those. But that's it.
Thank you, Bill. You do such a wonderful job with your presentation.
I appreciate it. Is there any questions?
Yeah, I'll open up to the board.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, maybe you could talk through the exemptions, and I'm not quite sure. I've seen that on a presentation before.
Oh, these exemptions here?
Yeah.
Sure. So the residential exemption basically is a, is something that the, you'd see over on Cape Cod or something like that, where you have a lot of summertime influx. And so what it does, it shifts the burden from people that live in the town all year long over to visitors or landlords. So you have to have, your primary residence has to be in town in order to apply for that exemption, which North Andover typically is. So voting for a residential exemption, all it does is shift the burden to the higher, higher-valued properties from lower. And we really don't have a lot of lower-value properties here, so that's why the residential exemption isn't very popular here in North Andover. It just doesn't work. It's just kind of playing with numbers and shift that burden within a class. The small commercial exemption, what that does is it, that, it gives a break to a small commercial property and not essentially the tenant of that property. It has to have less than 10 employees for that business. It has to be valued less than $1 million. And the owner of the property gets the exemption, not the tenant. So that's really not very popular either, because we have a lot of tenant properties, and we have a lot of commercial condominiums as well, so it doesn't really work out. They're not rented out. So that's typically what the small commercial does. And the open space exemption, we don't have any classified open space, so it doesn't make any sense at all to adopt that. Because we would have none.
I just never seen one before. And I'm assuming when you say not adopted by town, it means that it would, if we were to consider any of them, they'd be adopted at a town meeting before we could do any.
Oh, no, you could adopt it tonight. You could adopt it at a Select Board meeting tonight. And that's why I say, we haven't historically adopted it in the past, because it hasn't been. I can tell you that if you really want to dig into these exemptions, I could spend probably an hour on each. And give you, I'll give you a really good presentation, and I love doing spreadsheets. So I could, I'm happy to entertain you. Maybe over the next year, we could have a presentation on each exemption.
Sorry I asked.
May I ask, so the CPA exemption for seniors, that's not listed on here?
That's right. That's not an adoption. We've already adopted that as a town, and we grant those each year. They come in and they apply for those in our office. That's the same as our elderly exemption, our disabled veterans exemption, blind, and CPA exemption. So those are all already adopted by the town and granted each year to individuals who apply with the Board of Assessors in our office. And we see those people come in all the time annually about this time, and they have all the way to April 1st to apply for those. And if you ever have any questions, we do have a link on the Senior Citizen site that allows you to see if you have, if you, if you apply or if you qualify for those exemptions. Those are on there. You answer a few little questions, and it kind of gives you an idea if you possibly qualify. And then you could come see us, and we could help you fill out the paperwork and help you through that process. Happy to do it.
Another question I have for you, not on this subject in particular, is the, the assessed value that you spoke about. So that is a year past, not current.
Yeah, that's a good point. The, like I said, I try to keep it simple, but it does get a little bit convoluted. So the, when you get your January 1st tax bill this year, that comes out on January 1st, 2022, the valuation of your property was made as of January 1st, 2021, using sales of properties in 2020. So we are literally one year behind the market, and you have to keep that in mind when you're coming to us about the valuation of your property. Now, the most important bill that anybody gets is the January 1st bill, because it does have a new tax rate. It has a new valuation of your property. If for some reason, the assessor, God forbid, made some sort of mistake on your tax bill, then that's the time you want to come see us, is January 1st to February 1st. The state does only allow us one month in order to correct any deficiencies in your valuation, any of the physical data, and then after that, we cannot. So it's very important that if you do look at your property bill, you have questions, certainly give us a call. We're happy to answer any of those and fill out any paperwork, and we will take another look at it. Even if you're not sure, happy to, happy to talk to you and take a look and, and see if we made any mistakes and take a second, second set of eyes on it and make sure that it's correct for you.
Yeah, to reiterate that, that deadline is certain. And if you find some discrepancies or questions, and you don't come in before that date, it's out of the town's control. That's state law, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, that's, it's very tough. Puts us in a tough position because we certainly have had people come in and file for something after February 1st, and we, we can't do anything about it until the following year. We can certainly make those corrections, but you won't see it until the following January. So it's, it's very tough, and I always tell people all the time, look at that January 1st bill. If you have any questions whatsoever, call us. We're happy to answer any questions. You know, it doesn't matter what, what you have. We'll, we'll take a look at it. Happy to do that.
Another question, Bill. Can you talk to what drove the industrial valuations up?
Yeah, certainly. We don't have a lot of industrial properties. Ones we do certainly have gone through some renovations. We saw, of course, the valuation of the Osgood Street property go through some big changes this year. They subdivided that lot. Amazon's coming in. They demolished some buildings, but land values go up because of those splits. And simply splitting that lot into two industrial properties where 100% of the land is being utilized, that alone goes up about $4.5 million, just in land. So you can see how those things, and then the old mill building, the High Street building that was renovated, we looked at that property again. That was collected this year. Some of those valuations went up, looking at the tenant structure in those buildings. Some of the other projects was the, some of the other industrial buildings that had some additions put on. And we did hire a company to go out and look at every industrial property this past year, which was 78 of them. And so by doing that and visiting those properties, you pick up anything that you may have missed over the last few years. So that was an important task we did, and it made an adjustment of the valuations of those properties and certainly the development that goes on in the town over the past year or two helped a lot with that.
So the full, obviously, the full evaluation of the Amazon property isn't even in yet. That's just.
No, not even, not even close. We are, but we're, we're, we're hoping it comes in soon, so. Looking forward to it.
So that's sort of the interesting one, pulls on the new growth piece.
Yes.
Which, you know, is, is over 1%, almost 1.1%. Do you have a sense of the trajectory of the new growth, looking ahead the next couple of years, and also kind of where we are relative to historic trends?
Yeah, so that, that's always a roller coaster ride for us, and depending upon development. But certainly, we're probably going to see a large amount of growth over the next couple of years, with the Amazon project coming in, as well as their personal property, which is a big valuation. For those people who don't know, personal property is any business in town that owns machinery or equipment used in the conduct of business is taxable. And so for a place like Amazon, it may have robotics. Some of those types of machines are very expensive, and some of the manufacturing buildings even, they can buy one machine that's worth a half a million dollars. So those add up. The other thing that's in that sector is utilities. So Columbia Gas was sold out to, yes, sorry, EverSource this year. And that made a big difference, so their valuation will weigh down. So you see some of those fluctuations, but certainly, I think we're going to see a lot of growth from that Amazon project and also the, we have some more apartment buildings going in, you know, with Avalon and some of those things. So we're going to see a large number of growth, a large amount of growth over the next year or two. And so you'll have to decide what you want to do at that point.
So that's, and obviously, as more businesses come into town, which, we just licensed three, three businesses last month, so that, that feeds into it. So the other side of that ledger, we've got the debt exclusion from the high school. So how close are we to burning the mortgage on that?
That is a question for Lynn. Yes. 2025.
So we're very close to the end of that. So that's going to fall off.
That's right, yeah.
Okay. That's all, so that fact, that's another factor, that's sort of the counterbalance.
Right. That affects, that affects our, our bottom line of what we can raise. As soon as that debt exclusion is gone, then that will come off the books, and our levy limit will decrease by that amount.
So one last, a sort of perspective question is, we talk about this every year, but the fact that 87-plus percent of our base is residential really makes us fairly extraordinary, other than our neighbors, you know, in Boxford, in terms of. other than our neighbors, you know, in Boxford in terms of having to really rely on the, on the single family residence here. So any kind of development that we can do really does have a relatively strong impact because there's very, you know, there's very little movement.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a great, that's a great point. If you look at this chart and you can see how the class is made up when you look at this pie chart, what essentially you're saying is this, this little piece of the pie right here gets increased.
Yeah.
You know, and that's what, that's what those projects will do. As that commercial, industrial, personal property segment increases, the burden increases and therefore decreases some of the burden on the residential class. So it is a good thing. It just depends on what's the balance. You know, we are definitely what's called the bedroom community because we have a lot of residential properties in the town. Like I said, 87%. That's, that's quite a bit. So.
Thank you, Bill.
That's a great point.
Touching us on that, and probably an unfair question to ask without giving you warning, what do, what do you think will happen once Amazon comes fully on and you get the big personal property piece of it and of course the, the building? What do you think our, what will our residential to commercial percentages be? Will that, again, it's probably unfair for me to ask you that.
It's harder because of the TIF. So it's a little bit more complicated.
It is, yeah. What, what Melissa's saying basically is because we offered a tax increment financing plan on that, the valuation of the property is valued fully, but the reduction in the amount collected is stayed. It's really not giving them a, a break. It's just the staying of how much we collect over the 10-year period. And it increases as we go on. So you can see 80% in the first two years and then as that starts rolling off, it does start to increase. And I think that's a good thing because obviously that, that building needed some economic revival and to get something like Amazon in there to revive that property and to do what they're doing down there and to roll it up slowly into us, it makes it a little more reasonable and transitional rather than seeing something big like that come in right away. And then you've got to figure out, what do we do finance wise? What do we, you know, what do we do with the new growth? What do we? So it's, it allows us to really plan ahead and be careful of what we do financially with the town.
But I think TIFs often don't hurt the community. It's just a means of getting people in and we usually don't go down even with the TIF. It still goes up.
We've got some pretty good concessions.
Yes, absolutely.
It will build. I think it's just harder to quantify exactly what the impact's going to be on the commercial levy versus residential levy because of the TIF. I mean, something we certainly can look at and report back to you, but I think we'd have to go back and do that calculation with the TIF in place.
Yeah, we certainly can.
Yeah.
You talk, you know, I mean, because you're talking about a $215 million property, you know, which is, which is huge. See, you know, the commercial valuation alone isn't, you know, it, it's going to make a big, a big difference.
But so for people at home understand, so it's certainly worth a whole lot more even including the TIF than it were, if it were to remain the same.
Oh, by far.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so, but people get confused. They think we're giving money away and it really.
No, in the first year of the TIF.
It's somewhat complicated, but it's a great means to more money coming in and we don't go low, lower in order to go higher. We, we go higher right from the beginning and then it continues to.
Right. In the first year of the TIF, we have $900,000 more in tax income than we had under the losing property.
Thank you. That's, you said, you explained it really well for me.
It just comes on a little slower.
Yeah, but still much better.
It's definitely going to make a, a big difference and it's going to be a positive impact on the town.
That's right.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Bill, one other clarification. I think you said the residential properties went up on average 8%?
Yep, 8.8%. Yeah.
8.8?
Yeah.
So the average single family home went up by about $50,000, $49,000.
That's right.
Amazing.
Yeah. It really is and it, and it's continuing that way. Don't forget where, what you, what I'm giving you now is a year old.
It's old.
You know? So we've seen it continue like that trend again for this year. So next year, it's going to be more of the same.
So this is the first time going through this process and I very much appreciate your presentation. It was very, very helpful. Most of my questions have been answered, but one of the things I think, just so that everybody at home also understands, are there any surprises that we see with regard to our excise taxes or any other taxes that we are bringing in? I think I.
Yeah, I don't know of any major changes that we've seen from the state or anything. All of our revenues are coming in as expected from where they should be this time of year. Thanks to Lynn, who just actually gave me a presentation on Friday about that. Yeah, we don't see anything that, that seems alarming at this point.
Okay. And I, my other question's already answered, so.
Okay, great.
And just to be clear, if we are at the 1.32 shift, we, it's kind of an even burden amongst the tax, the residential and the commercial.
That's right.
As close as we can get.
Yep, the, the tax bill will go up about the same, 270 to 265 dollars, somewhere in that range, so.
That's a practice that we've been doing. We had an adjustment several years ago because it was just, it was way off. And since then, we've been trying to be reasonably fair. But keeping an eye on, you know, if certain properties tend to really shoot up, but we're not going to, we'll take that into account. But I think you've did a very nice job with this as well.
Well, I appreciate that, yeah. It is, is definitely hard for you to decide where, you know, what the balance is because you can see that the, the tax bill goes up evenly at about a 1.32, but there's other considerations to, to think about is what is next year going to bring? It's going to be more of the same. The residential class is going to increase. Do we know what commercial is going to do with the tendency here with the COVID issues that we've seen in the past year? A commercial property is going to continue to struggle a little? And then is it fair to keep pushing the burden onto them? So that's, that is a tough decision that you all have to make. I'm happy that I'm on this side of the table.
But I, I get, I'm going to just say something that I tend to say every year when we go over this. People need to understand that residential and commercial is not assessed the same way.
Yeah, definitely not.
Totally different. So that, and there's reasons for that. You might want to touch upon them, but I mean, but we're not assessed the same way. So it makes it a little bit more difficult sometimes to raise everybody the same when it's, we're just not, whereas residential is assessed on the value of the property, whereas commercial is just a whole other formula.
That's right. It, you know, when we look at residential properties, it's easy to look at what similar sales are doing into value and estimate based on sales. But when you look at commercial property, it's an investment vehicle. So it's, it's looked at totally different from an investment standpoint, from the long-term leases, what's the income stream? And it gets very complicated and we certainly have to keep a balance with the professionals in that field and not to, you know, overvalue those properties because that can get very expensive on the town side as well because then we have to, you know, struggle at the appellate tax board to defend evaluations that we came up with. That costs money. It puts a burden on our overlay account. So it's certainly a, a different formula altogether and you can't look at them the same. They do move differently. There are different segments in the market and so you're, you're absolutely right, Rosemary. It's, it's definitely different and there is a balance to look at.
And I think you cut right to the chase, saying theirs is based upon investment and monies in and so forth and so on, where that's not how it is. And especially apartment complexes and things like that.
Right.
It's totally, it's not based on what the building is worth per se. It's, it's complicated.
Very complicated.
And that's why I think the government has given us the opportunity to do this, to do the shift is because we're not totally assessed exactly the same way.
That's right.
I mean, I'm just kind of, it's, it's such a complicated process. Oh, and the other thing too, this, I'll throw this one in because everyone says, my house was assessed for more than 2.5%. And I said, well, that's good news and there's bad news. The good news is your home outpaced other properties in the town and hence your taxes have gone up. But, but people, they don't understand that. What do you mean? I, I'm at, I'm at, you know, you know, 2.5, but maybe 2.75%. And it's like, well, again, that's good news for you. Somebody else in town, they went down in their property value. That's not such great news, but, so when people see this at home, just keep that in mind. It's, as you said, it's the whole pie of 2.5%. And then they do the assessed values and they sort of prorate it out as to who gets how much of the pie. But it is, this is probably one of the most complicated things for people to, to understand on something that's really important is their tax bill.
Yeah, and that's why I like this presentation because it does give us an opportunity to educate the people. That's why I've put this up on the website as well and I try to make our staff available to anybody in town that has questions. And like I said, we're very happy to answer. Anybody who has seen the presentation tonight even has further questions. It gets very complicated, but I certainly can explain it to them and I'm happy to do it.
No, you've done a great job.
Thank you again, Bill. It was wonderful.
Sure, absolutely.
And I think, like Rosemary mentioned, we've historically have tried to make an even, even on the commercial and the residential, especially the couple of years that we've gone through between Columbia Gas and COVID.
Yes.
We've tried our best to keep that even. If there is no more discussion, I'll take a motion to close the.
We have to see public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any public comments on the, on the tax shift? If there's no public comment, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I have charged a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And if it pleases the board, we'll take the vote out of order so that Bill can go home.
I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I'll start a motion for conversation. You know what the appellate board? Oh, wait, hold on. Let me get the proper language. I know it has to be legal. Let me make that. Madam Chair, I move the select board adopt a residential factor of, I wrote it down, 0.9536 for the purpose of classifying the FY 2022 North Andover property taxes. And that would be a 1.32 shift. And that's my motion.
Second discussion, or second? I'll second it for the sake of discussion.
Is there any discussion?
The reason I, I made that motion is as we spoke earlier, you know, we, in, historically, we try to keep the increases somewhat even and equitable. And I think by going to a 1.32 shift, that, you know, gives us a, an even increase between the residential and the commercial. You know, I think commercial businesses have had, you know, a tough couple of years with the gas crisis and then COVID right on top of that. So I think, you know, giving them any more of a shift, I feel would be burdensome. So I'd like to try to keep it equitable. I know we can't, you know, obviously, you know, taxes go up, so we all have to expect that, but we can try to at least keep that increase somewhat in parity as we move up.
I would act with that. I think it's, one of the things that's most important to me is making sure that we are mindful of what both our residents and our businesses have, have under, have gone through over the last couple of years. So appreciate the discussion and go on the right track.
Any other discussion?
Dylan, Dylan, I think we just, don't mind, just, just, you know, be cognizant that we, you know, 1.5 is the end of the runway, right? So, you know, as we march up, we give ourselves less and less opportunity, just, just for conversation.
You know, I get that, but if you look historically, we've marched up and marched down and we, we're not, you know, we're not immune to going back down again. It depends on the economic climate, the evaluations and everything. So, I mean, if you look at the historical factors that we've had, if I can read this, in, you know, in 2016, we were at 1.36, 2017, 1.36, and then we went to, 2018, we went to 1.39. And then in 2019, we went down to 1.35. And then, you know, we, or actually 2019, I think we were at 1.2. So we, you know, it's not a flat or it's not an ever rising curve. It, it really depends on where we go. So it's not like we get to a point where of no return. You know, we, we can make decisions year to year based on the climate and then evaluation, so.
And I think the point is it, it depends on what seems to be the most fair for, for both residential and commercial. And that's, and that's where it goes up a little, goes down a little, goes up a little, goes down a little. So I.
They're pointing though, but I mean, but we can't.
No, no, you don't want to be a one.
Yeah, we don't want to.
And valuations change whether the resident, right now residential's just climbing at such a rate. And, so we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have a.
Thank you.
Attack the.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much, Bill.
You're welcome.
Our next public hearing will be the application for storage of flammable and combustible liquids, solids and gases at 1980 Turnpike Street. I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing pursuant to chapter 148, section 13, for the application of storage of flammable and combustible liquids, solids and gases at 1980 Turnpike Street.
I have a motion and a second?
Okay.
Do I have a motion, I have a, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have?
I know, it's like, there are a lot of apartments around basically that property, like ton of residential apartments, like the tanks seems to be like very huge. So the, the question is like why it is in the outside and then have you considered any other choices of putting under the ground or like what are the precautions that are taken to kind of, to reduce the risk for the residential areas around basically like that?
Madam Chair, could you just have him say his name and his address just so I have it for the record?
And also speak up a little bit because we can hear the fan in the back. It's a little hard to hear you.
Sorry, I'll repeat my question. My name is Sai. I live in 30 Compass Point.
Thank you.
It's right next to the, basically the, the property that we are discussing.
Thank you.
The question is like, there are a lot of residential areas around, like what are the precautions, I mean, that are taken so that, I mean, it will not affect, I mean, we had a great gas disaster a couple of years ago. So it's just like worried the, having a big tank sitting right next to our, I mean, apartment basically. And there are like three or four apartments around that area. It's a highly residential area.
My understanding is that they're existing and we're bringing them into compliance, correct?
That's correct. So Madam Chair, these are tanks that have been in place for many years. If you read the application on page two, there is a letter from the fire department basically stating that they had found these, Lieutenant Kilcoyne and Lieutenant Nuzbaum had discovered these tanks and that this application is to bring the property at 1980 Turnpike Street into compliance. Any storage in any conditions of these tanks have to be in accordance with NFPA 58 as well as 527 CMR, chapter 69. And the application is in order.
And it's been reviewed by the police, the planning, fire department. Is there anybody from 1980?
I know.
Sure? Thank you.
How we doing? My name's Chris Castro. I'm one of the three building owners. The buildings have been there for 35 years. I purchased that in 2009, so for 12 years we've been there. Upon buying the building, we've had the fire department there inspecting. They never mentioned anything about the propane tanks. That's been the only source of fuel for heating. Each building has two 1,000 gallon tanks in place right now. And we're trying to upgrade and update the tanks and we had to file a permit and that's why we're here to get compliant because I guess the town didn't have a record of the propane tanks on location.
Could you talk a little bit about, I assume that they get inspected and the tanks get inspected and for compliance?
Yeah, the tanks, for example, we have Eastern Propane. They come and inspect them yearly. If we're out back, tanks are above ground, spread out. My building's 15,000 square feet. The next building's 10,000 square feet. And the apartment complexes came in two years ago. I think they're fair, they are fairly close to us and they're closer to the other two buildings. buildings. But in order for us to even change propane companies, we have to file for a permit and get approval by the, the town and the fire department. So in this case, I'm going, switching to a new company. So they went and provided, or went and filed for a new permit and that's how all this came about. So I said, okay, I'm going to take everything. I'm speaking on behalf of Elm Square condominiums, the three commercial buildings and we're just trying to get everything up to date, do it right.
I know, it's, it's a good point because obviously if they're not permanent, then, you know, the fire department would not even know they're there.
Correct.
So if there's an issue, they're going to, to respond to a, a fire there, they need to know that those tanks are there. So this just gets everything into compliance and makes sure, you know, we get into a regular inspection routine and everything else, so puts it on the radar.
But they've been there for 35 years, so it's.
Yeah, no, no doubt, but yeah, no doubt, but something, obviously 35 years ago wasn't, wasn't hit off.
Exactly.
Maybe don't have to tell us. Something was missed, so we're glad we caught it and now we get it into, into the radar.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
No.
Any other? Thank you very much.
All right, thanks for your consideration.
Any other discussion? Let me just want to see if there's any other comment. Is there any other public comments? Okay, thank you. I will take, I'll entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing to determine, sorry, for the application for storage of flammable and combustible liquids, solids and gases at 1980 Turnpike Street.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And if it pleases the board, I'll also move this vote up out of order. So I will, you know, I think like selectman Valencourt said, it's good to get these on the books and get compliance and that way that they are inspected and the fire department knows about them and we can follow the, the laws that they should fall under. So if there is any other discussion, I'll take a motion for the storage of the flammable and combustible liquids at 1980 Turnpike.
I'll move that the select board approve the application for the storage of flammable and combustible liquids, solids and gases at 1980 Turnpike Street.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Other than I think we should probably make sure that we don't have any others that have slipped through the cracks over these years, you know, maybe a drone flyover or something and see if we find anything else, you know?
This is the second one this year.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. That's what I was thinking as well.
Does that fall under the purview of the fire department?
Yes. Thousand gallons of propane gas is a lot.
It is a lot, yes. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. All right, so we are going to move on to our joint meeting with the school committee and I really want to thank the school committee, Dr. Gilligan and Dr. Mealy for coming tonight. We appreciate it. Facilities master plan two is formative and it's going to really impact the future of our town and our students and our families. So thank you for coming and I would invite the school committee to come up and join us this evening.
Invited myself.
You knew that was the right thing.
You knew it was coming.
Now we will make you dance for the, listen, we did do that, okay? No pressure.
Give a donation, that's what I did.
For the moment, I'll pass it over to the chair of the school committee to open his meeting.
Thank you very much. So I would like to call to order a meeting of the North Endover School Committee, November 8th, 2021, for the purpose of a joint meeting and discussion on the facilities master plan two, our recommendation. So is there a motion?
I'll take a motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, well, our pattern is roll call vote. So Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Wietzke?
Yes.
Ms. Mabley?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And the chair vote yes. So we are now in joint session. I do obviously just want to point out for anybody who's following along at home, Ms. Picard is virtually attending here. I don't know if the camera scans to her or not, but there she is, so thank you.
Yes, it does.
Okay, perfect, all right, we can't see all of that. Before we begin and I turn things over to, to Dr. Gilligan, I'd like to just take a quick moment and thank the select board for having us here tonight. We had talked before about having a presentation, we've been having a number of forums throughout town and trying to really kind of get to as many audience members as, as possible. So we've had some at different schools, we'll be having some at the youth center. I wanted to have one with the board of selectmen and obviously the audience that is here as well. So thank you for including us and inviting us here. Again, special thanks to Melissa Murphy Rodriguez, town manager, for, for doing that. And then a couple of quick people that I do just want to thank as well are the school capacity subcommittee. We've had many forums where we've had some really great questions and I think you'll hear some of those questions and I know Melissa and Lori Berzloff have been part of that. We had huge parents and community members who participated in the survey and I know Dr. Mealy's going to talk about that. The Mount Vernon Group is in the back and we, we can hit them with some of the hard questions as, as they come up as well, but they've been at all of our meetings and, and we couldn't do this without them. And really the facilities master plan two committee as well, so, so crucial and so important to doing this. As, as we look forward to this and, and you may have seen some of this before, you know, we've talked a lot about the space of our schools and I think there's no doubt that small class sizes, especially at the elementary levels have, have such an impact on learning. You know, we're going to start to see about what those gaps are in, in some of our, in all of our schools and what we want to do to kind of rectify those, how we're going to meet the needs of students as we move forward into the 21st century, continue moving forward, look to things like ADA compliance and safety of our students and Dr. Mealy says this all the time, we're grandfathered in for a lot of different projects, but that doesn't necessarily make it right to be grandfathering in lack of sprinklers, for example. About three years ago, we opened up the ABECC and that had a direct impact on class size on every single elementary school. What we were able to do is move anywhere from two to four classes out of those buildings, which then allowed other classes to, to go back in. We, we were able to kind of put music classes in, in some of them and just, you know, spread out some of the classes where some of them were a little bit bigger. So that has had a huge impact and we're looking to continue to do that good work as well. And I know, I feel like I'm going to steal a line from you, but this is a generational type of impact that, that we will have on this community. So, you know, for the five of us that are on this board and the five of you that are on your board and kind of continuing and going forward with that, this is a legacy moment, right? So we're, we're fighting hard. I think, you know, for most of us, our children will be graduated or be leaving the schools by the time that there's an impact. So we're not doing this out of a selfish means by any stretch. Maybe I'll have grandchildren in this town and it better be built before then. But the reality of it is, I mean, this is something that I think people will look back on as we do with things like the sergeant school and the Thompson and the high school and say the impact that it has had as we've continued and, and you know, it's roughly 20, 20 plus years for some of them, so. And I'm going to turn it over to Doctors Mealy and Gilligan here.
Folks, thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm Dr. Greg Gilligan and this is Dr. Jim Mealy, the superintendent and assistant superintendent for finance and operations. And I'm thrilled we have the ability to have this joint meeting so that we can present the school capacity recommendations that the school committee approved and present the information that we've been having public forums and so the people in the community are aware of the space needs of the North Endover public schools. And again, to echo what Andrew said, I'd have to thank the work of the subcommittee and the input, particularly the participation on the survey last spring of over 800 staff members and community members and, you know, parents and guardians here. Chair McDevitt introduced the school committee here tonight, which I typically do, but I have to say at all of our public forums, it's been tremendous to have the town manager, Melissa Murphy Rodriguez and Lori Berzloff, the director of administrative services. They've been at every forum with us and Melissa and I meet weekly. She's been a tremendous partner and I know have been, been around for a little bit. I've seen what we can do and we all work together in the community, you know, and, and facilities master plan one, we saw some tremendous improvements in buildings with, you know, the Kittredge, Town Hall, the school administration building, DPW, the fire station, Anne Brad Street, the senior center, which is just down the street from where I live and there's a big ceremony tomorrow, I understand, at nine, so just, just tremendous projects there. But we also know that we have needs in the schools and facilities master plan two is not just a school project, although it's very heavy on the school project, but it also includes besides the Atkinson, Franklin, Kittredge, the middle school and the Brad Street, the fire station number two and the youth center as well. And the ability to renovate and build are just so critical to impact class size, as Chair McDevitt said, become ADA compliant, provide the space and equity needed for 21st century learning while building capacity for future growth in the community. Schools of this age were simply just, they weren't designed to accommodate things like occupational therapy and physical therapy, speech, counseling and EL, just to name a few. And simply put, this is a long-term investment that is going to impact generations to come so that we can create the best places for teachers to teach and students to learn. And I'm looking forward to continuing this work. It's, when we look at the age of the buildings, you know, the Kittredge being 71 years old, you know, and when you look at the Atkinson, the Franklin, Namson, Kittredge, it has an average age of 65 years old and I think, you know, if you go back, that's when Dwight Eisenhower was reelected to office in 1956. And, you know, so we have some of these older buildings and then even the newer ones, you know, probably have a little over 20 years old besides the Brad Street with the Sergeant, Thompson and the high school. So really looking forward to this project. Again, I think it's going to be very impactful and really appreciate your time tonight. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mealy.
Thank you, Dr. Gilligan. I, I will say that for Mount Vernon Group, we have here Bill Peters and Al Cuevez who have been at, they've had representatives at all of these public forums as well, so it's been great to have them and I have them speak to the, a big question that comes up is the phasing and how this can work when you're still in school and keeping the kids safe and, and educating. So I always have them speak to that because they've done a lot of those projects around the state. I also want to point out, I took these last week, we had a really nice day, I went around and took all these pictures and I'm really proud of that fire station shot and bottom middle there.
I agree.
So we're talking about the projects that Dr. Gilligan mentioned. We have Atkinson, Franklin and Kittredge Elementary, we have the North Endover Middle School, the Anne Brad Street Early Childhood Center and Fire Station Number Two, we'll get a great shot of that after it's done, and the North Endover Youth Center. Specifically for the schools, what we've been focusing on is that we need to renovate our older schools. It's definitely time. Some of the, the older school is Kittredge, back in 1949 that was built. We have Atkinson built in the 60s and Franklin in the 50s, so it's definitely time, a lot of the equipment in there is original, that needs to be updated. And at the same time, we want to ensure equity and provide needed support spaces for 21st century learners. Education changes, just like everything else does, we're building a new senior center because things have changed in how we want to deliver services to the seniors in our town. So in the same vein, things change in education as well. We also want to be able to continue to impact class size and build capacity for future growth and we'll talk about enrollment projections during this presentation. And then also we want to eliminate the portable classrooms that we have at both Atkinson and Franklin. They were put in there in the 80s and as usual, it was only for a few years. Well, the life expectancy on a portable is 20 to 25 years and we're well past that now, so it's time for them to go. First thing we did, the Mount Vernon Group came in and did building assessments of all of the schools and the two other locations, the fire station number two and the youth center. And these are available online. All of the information is available both on the town website and on the school website. You can see the final report that we generated as part of the subcommittee, all the presentations that we've done, anything you want to find out about these projects. And what they found, not surprisingly, is that these are older schools in need of renovations. We have mechanical systems that need to be modernized. Mr. McDevitt mentioned that we have code requirements that need to be met and ADA requirements that need to be met and we're grandfathered in and he did steal my line. I do say that that's not a good thing, that we are grandfathered in, but it just means that the code came, or those changes in the code or requirements came after the building was built. We also need to provide environments that are more conducive to learning. As we talk through this presentation, you'll hear how we've converted every single inch of space in our schools to something usable, but not, not ideal. We've converted closets, electrical closets and storage rooms to educational space that's certainly not ideal to, to learning. And we want the ability to improve indoor air quality. This came up during the pandemic, everyone talked about MERV filters, right? And what number filter are we using? And our systems in some of our schools, the high school in particular, allow us to put in a higher rated filter that allows us to improve air quality without having to open the windows. But the older buildings, the older systems just would burn out if you tried to do that and don't allow it. So while we had the air quality checked and it was up to standard, we could improve it with newer systems when the need came up. The other thing that was a big issue was trying to make sure that we provide as much equity across the district as we can. Now that happens with the kindergarten students because they all go to the same school. It happens to our middle school students, grade six to eight and high school, nine to 12, they all go to the same place, so they're getting the same education. It's not the case, especially with regards to the facilities at the elementary schools. We have five elementary schools and if you hold Sergeant up as the kind of standard bearer has all the space that you would want in a 21st century school and the flexibility to change things around, given the space that it has, that the other schools just don't have. So what we want for all of our elementary schools are space to allow for growth, space to be able to impact class size, space for the support spaces and that's one of the things I was talking about with changes. One of the big changes in education is the need to have pullout space for EL students, OTPT, special education, and it goes on. And you need to have sufficient space for that because it doesn't happen in the classroom. All of the learning does not happen in the, in the one classroom. So we need to have those spaces. And we also want to have dedicated appropriate specialist spaces and we also want these schools to have the type of environment that's conducive to learning. So just going through the projects, as I mentioned, Kittredge was built in 1949, the white that you see, that white roof, the modular construction, not portable, but modular construction classrooms, four of them, that were built in 2010 and certainly are, have a long lifespan to them. And then the green that you see that nobody can miss if you drive by is our, our Jimmick Kittredge. So, and that was built in 2013. Both of those are in good shape. The other building though, the older building built in 1949 is not. The exterior is in good to fair condition and the interior is fair to poor. Needs renovation, as we've talked about, for ADA requirements and modern code and the system's just mostly original, so we need to replace steam boilers with hot water, much more efficient and effective. And the electrical is mostly original and in fair to poor condition. We have some pictures of the different locations. That first picture up on the left, top left talks about ADA compliance. Up to the, if you go up those stairs and immediately on the right is the nurse's office and the only way up there is in the building is up those stairs. So if you're in a wheelchair or, you know, mobility is difficult, you have access issues. The only way to get there right now is to go out of the building and in through the classroom that's at the end of that corridor and then over to the nurse's office. So those are kind of, we have a lift that is not, it's only, it's grandfathered in as providing access for ADA requirements. And then the other pictures show the older building deteriorating, non-ADA fixtures and non-compliant fixtures, original equipment and so on. One of the things we did was the space analysis and one of the questions that came up had to do with where does the recommendation come from for the spaces? So for instance, art, MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority, has recommendations for all of these educational spaces. Their recommendation for art is a thousand feet and where they come from is based on best practices and getting feedback from the professionals, teachers, principals, administrators and the experts, whoever they might be, they come up with their recommendation of what the square footage should be in that particular area. So classrooms, it's somewhere between 900 and 950 feet. That hasn't changed a lot over the years. An art room is 1,000, a music room is 1,200, a reading room is 500 and so on. And so you can see here what we have for existing rooms. Our art room at Kittredge, which is a converted corridor that was closed off and at one time was our library and another time was teacher work room and right now is the art room, is 700 square feet. We do not currently, although we've used a classroom in the past for the music room, we don't, do not have it. It's on a cart, so to speak. And then reading is a converted closet that's 140 square feet with no windows. The calf kitchen, we have to have. The caf kitchen, we have to have six lunches at Kittredge. And that makes it difficult. That's more than an elementary school should have to kind of schedule the day because it's too small. The gym is great. We wouldn't have to change a thing with the gym. The library media center is about half of what it should be. That's a converted custodial storage space that became a classroom, a kindergarten classroom. And then when they were moved out, as we talked about, it became our library there. And the same goes for the support spaces, well under what's recommended. Kittredge is one of our kind of flagships for some of our special education programs. They do a great job over there. And they all, all the schools do. Kittredge does a great job, but very little space. And you'll see that with the other schools as well, but it's about a third of what it should be. And that comes up when the special education, the state agency comes in to audit.
Yeah, I think what you're going to see from Dr. Mealy's presentation and our presentation tonight is that all of the schools, particularly these older schools, they've been as creative as possible over the years and converted every single space possible, from closets to old restrooms to stages. And it closed everything to provide the services required today to be in compliance.
The other thing that has come up recently is, four years ago, we started applying to MSBA, as I'm sure you all are aware, for the middle school as a project that we hoped would go, be accepted into the program and we would get reimbursement from the state. We got through the first stage, the first year, but we haven't gotten any further since then, although we've continued to apply. And then this past year, we applied, we applied for middle school, Kittredge, Franklin and Atkinson as well. In discussions that Dr. Gilligan and I had with representative from MSBA, she recommended that we put, you have to prioritize. So we're submitting four, we have to prioritize them, one, two, three and four. And the expression I keep using is, what we got from her is, put your worst foot forward. Which one has the best chance of getting approved? And it so happens that Kittredge has the best chance. It's our oldest school, the one that's in the worst condition. And actually is the one that, based on our recommendation of building new, is the one that would cost the most as well. So it makes sense that if we're going to get approval from MSBA, let's get it for Kittredge. So we put it first, it made it through their first cut. They said they had 58 applications?
58 core applications. They cut it down to 20 for a Zoom visit and then a senior study, which is a site visit with architects, engineers. And they came out for that. And I think, you know, the folks involved did a great job, but I think the building spoke for itself. And I think to Jim's point, the ability to, you know, get that type of reimbursement from the state would be beneficial to, you know, the other projects moving forward as well with, you know, reimbursement probably between 40 and 45% along those lines. Because we also realize, you know, we realize how, that the other projects are also critical too. We realize how overcrowded the middle school is. I mean, it's one of the largest middle schools in the region with the highest class size. And, you know, it's a priority too. So, but we also want to work with the MSBA and this was, they've been very helpful in the application process over time. But I think it was four or five now we've submitted for the middle school. And this was the first time with the others. And they've shown that real interest in the Kittredge. And we expect to hear in December, as early as December, which is pretty significant in terms of this long-term plan. And if not December, then it would be March.
So we're certainly hopeful it'll be December. So we did the same in this presentation for the other schools. Atkinson built in 1964, originally as a middle school. And what that means is that because it was built for a middle school, the gym and the kitchen cafeteria are sufficiently sized for an elementary school. So we wouldn't have to add to those, we would just renovate them. The roof, the flat roof, which is a smaller portion of this building, is failing and we put in maintenance annually. And that's a common theme. I mean, we spend a lot of money annually to maintain these buildings because of their age, that we wouldn't have to do if they were renovated. So it's the Atkinson roof, it's the Atkinson plumbing, it's the Kittredge electrical, it's the Franklin plumbing is their biggest issue as well. So we spent a lot of, a lot of time and money maintaining these buildings because of their age. It's very similar to Kittredge in that it's in need of ADA requirements and modern codes, replaces steam boilers. The difference for Atkinson is that it does not like Franklin, it does not have a fire suppression system, sprinklers. So again, grandfathered in, but, but not great. And we would address that issue finally with this renovation. And Atkinson has a lift, which again was grandfathered in, but we would add an elevator because what's proposed for Atkinson would be another wing of two stories so that we would have an elevator connecting and allow access between the first and second floor. And these are the pictures. You can see the roof where it's buckle, you know, it's puffing up and it's cracking and it's pooling water. You can see non-ADA hardware and clearances and toilets and clearances. The lift is there and the original electrical that needs to be replaced. I won't go through this as much as I did with Kittredge, but you can see this for yourself. Again, the kitchen and caf and the gym, we wouldn't have to do anything. But other areas, the art room is about half of what it should be, the same with music. And again, those are converted spaces that are being used. And it's either closet, storage rooms, or splitting classrooms in half to make, you know, these spaces. And then Franklin, built originally in 1958, added on in 67 and the portables went in in the 80s. Same conditions as we found in the others. And the exceptions with Franklin are, again, no fire suppression system. But also, if you've been to Franklin, you probably know that they do not have a standardized gym. They have what looks like a couple of classrooms that are put together. It's certainly not sufficient for the school.
That's a generous description.
Yeah, yeah, I've heard stronger words than that to define it. So that's something else we would address as well. And again, the pictures that show the same issues that MVG put together for us. And the same analysis. At Kittredge, I mean, sorry, Franklin, the gym, you can see how, how much smaller it is than it needs to be. But the library is very nice there. We wouldn't have to do much more than renovate that. But all the other spaces are converted and insufficient in size. And then the middle school, which we've been talking about for a few years now, originally built as a high school in 53, extended in 62 and 95. Most exteriors and interiors in good to fair condition, but it needs ADA requirements and modern code. And one of the things I've been expressing is that older our students get, the tougher they are on the building. And so you see more wear and tear over time in our middle school and then the same at the high school. And we need to update our science labs at the middle school. And here are the pictures and you can see again these on our website, the town's website. The assessments are all there. We talked about enrollment projections. If you were, if you remember, and a lot of you probably do, there was a time when there was talk of building a new elementary school, Foster Farms property. And there were enrollment projections at the time that indicated that elementary enrollment was going to grow about 1,000 students. And that didn't happen. And we were very sensitive to that in having two enrollment projections done by independent consultants. But we also wanted to look at a much longer window of time to do our enrollment projections because what we felt happened back then was that they looked at a time when enrollment was growing and looked at a short window and then projected a steep slope of growth. It just wasn't the case. So if you look at the graph and based on that conversation earlier, this line with the circles would be the Valencourt line that has peaks and valleys as time goes on. And the dotted line that you can just barely make out, which is the trend line, we'll call the nobly line. In the case of the tax rate though, that's probably more of a straight line. In the case of student enrollment in North Andover, it's about 35 students per year. And so looking over 25 years, you see peaks and valleys, but the trend is 35. And that's what the consultants found as well. And that's taken into account birth rates and developments that are coming online, expected move-ins and outs and all of those different factors. So we are projecting to continue what's been going on for the last 25 years or so of 35 students per year. So the recommendation, this is based on a lot, Dr. Gilligan mentioned the input we got. We got tremendous response to our surveys. And if you combine both, we did a community survey and a staff survey, we were close to 1,000 responses on our surveys when you combine the two of them. It was clear, there are some personal favorites in the options that we had put out there. Some people like the thought of doing grade distribution schools instead of the traditional neighborhood schools. Some people like the idea of upper and lower middle school. But in the end, the subcommittee felt that it's kind of, if it's not broke, don't fix it. We don't, we can always do better through an achievement. That's not what we're trying to address right now. We'll, we do that and we continue to do that every year. But the real issue was a space issue. And so we didn't want to try to, that's going to be a tough enough battle getting these projects approved. We didn't want to have to have a battle about, you know, neighborhood schools changing and redistricting by a large amount. So it's why I think the consensus in the input we got from the community was, keep the current, sorry, grade distribution, maintain the neighborhood schools and then obviously add capacity and renovate to address the things we were talking about. Equity, support spaces, 21st century learning, class size and allowing for enrollment growth. And getting rid of those portables finally, but always being as fiscally responsible as we can. So visually, here's what these projects would address for us. In the middle of this, this is Dr. Gilligan's Venn diagram. In the middle, in the shaded darker area, all of the projects would allow us to provide ADA compliance, provide new code compliance, get rid of the portables, add classrooms, add support spaces and renovate the exterior and update our systems. On the right there, we are recommending Kittredge and just based on the condition of Kittredge and the layout of it, it just makes sense to build new rather than trying to renovate. And as Dr. Gilligan said, in the tour, the building just speaks for itself. Everyone that walked through was like, yeah, of course, of course we need to replace this building. And the other ones that are site-specific, Franklin and AB ECC is on there. When we built the AB ECC, we had to decrease the size of the gym cafeteria. But it ended up getting decreased to a point where it's just not useful as a gym in that building. So we would want to add a gym to the AB ECC, the Franklin gym, the middle school science labs, the Atkinson elevator and then the Atkinson and Franklin fire suppression systems. So what it could look like, this is Kittredge. MVG put together the preliminary designs of what these sites could, could look like. The blue area that you see is the existing gym and modular classrooms. And then the orange would be the new building. This oriented is, below the, the blue modular is the front or where the existing school is right now. So at this point, I'm going to ask either Al or Bill, it's usually Al, just to come up to explain how these projects are managed while school is still going on.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. So, construction phasing is pretty straightforward. We've done many of those types of projects in the last 60 years. But the basic, two most important things is the educational delivery and the safety of the teachers, students and the parents on the site. So how do we achieve that? We achieve that by completely separating the construction, not only during, you know, the building construction part, from the building and the site. So that complete is a separation of access for the contractors and keeping the students, parents and teachers separate from them. So they're not, there's no connection between the two during the construction process. And what we would do is we'd work with the district to figure out, okay, how much construction can we do so that we can minimize the amount of time that's spent during that construction period? So when you figure that out, then we can determine how much scope is done right away. So we always try to, you know, construct as much as possible upfront so that we can, once that's completed, we can take those students, put them in that portion of the building and then we begin to renovate and construct other portions of the building. So for example, an average building, if it was all brand new, it would be probably like an 18 to 24 month schedule. But if we have to renovate, it could be two or three phases. It could increase the timeline by six to eight months. So it could be a 24 to a 30, 32 month project, 34 month project. So each project is a little different in our particular case, but typically that's flushed out later on. But you get a concept of how long it would take and what we would do to make sure that the teachers and students continue delivering this, the education that they need to deliver during this whole construction process and making sure that there is absolutely no connection between the two. So that's a simple way of describing. Yes, sir?
So that's interesting. So what you're suggesting is, because I was thinking about how would this work do? I would think, I was thinking that all the students would somehow have to be absorbed in other schools during this period. But what you're suggesting is that there'd be construction going on in part of the, of the new building and they would stay in their existing building. And then once that's completed, they would move to the new building.
That's exactly correct. That's exactly correct.
That's interesting, yeah. I hadn't thought of that. I thought, you know, that somehow it would have to be absorbed in other schools.
No, that's not the concept.
Yeah, so we have some experience with it. I'd echo the sentiments. The number one is superintendent, make no mistake about it, the health and safety of our staff, students and families is paramount, you know, because construction projects, they bring a lot of equipment, they're in and out. And then the second part, 1A, is we don't want anything to impede the delivery of an excellent education to our students. But if you remember, Chris might have been on the board and maybe Stan at the time and I'm not sure, maybe Andrew, I don't know, you haven't been on that long, Andrew. But when we built the high school back in 2004, and they were talking about the high school earlier, for example, they built the high school down, the old high school was where the football field was and the soccer stadium and, you know, where everyone plays the sports. And they built the new high school up on the hill. They took, we took three professional development days prior to February vacation. And we moved in in 2004 during those three days, a week of February vacation. And the students took their stuff home. Someone like Dr. Mealy coordinated, whoever did it at the time, it was probably Paul Zemansky, an amazing move. We moved in and then they tore down the other building. You know, so I, they, you know, that's really critical that something like that could happen. So something like a Kittredge could build capacity too in the short term in case we had to, you know, we had a new development online or, you know, created more space just in the short term so we can work on these other renovations as well.
If my memory serves me right, the middle school, they stayed in the building and then they moved from wing to wing. It wasn't great, but it was what it was.
Yeah, and you'll see the middle school project proposal coming up and same with the Thompson and some of these other projects. But I think they've done hundreds and hundreds of these, so they have quite a bit of experience.
The only one that's really hard on are the parents and the teachers. The kids seem to be able to roll with it quite well.
Typically, under those conditions, we usually have, during the construction, weekly or bi-weekly meetings and we involve all the community. If there are any issues ongoing, we also reach out to the community and say, okay, this is changing, so we need to plan for that. So there's always open communication during the process to at least alleviate the unknowns to them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Al. So you can see that in these other renditions as well. The Atkinson would be kind of a mirror wing to the existing wing. And just what Rosemary and Dick have been talking about, you would build that and then move the students out of the existing into that and then renovate the old. And you can see the same in Franklin where you can see the gym going, where that portable is there and then where the other two portables are in the back, you'd have a wing that connects the existing wings that could be built and then renovate the others in a phased approach. And the middle school, this one always causes some concern. People are not necessarily happy about possibly losing the courtyard there. But we've had a few different architects look at this and their initial recommendation, it's not the final recommendation, that would come when somebody finally sat down to design exactly what makes the most sense. It could be the front of the building, it could be off to the side where the cafeteria is now, or it could be the courtyard. But the initial preferred location from those that have looked at this would be the courtyard to do a two or three story addition in there. This still allowed for natural light to the existing and new classrooms. And then the AB ECC, you can see where the orange here is where we would propose to add a sufficiently sized gym for that school. And that would be on the existing preschool playground site. And then the preschool playground wouldn't have to go too far, it could just come over here next to the kindergarten playground. And then the other two projects we talked about, Fire Station Number Two and the Youth Center where Salem Street and Johnson Street meet. center where Salem Street and Johnson Street meet, you're probably already aware that that would add a bay to that building and some support spaces and living spaces in the front of the existing building. And the youth center, Rick, you know, has a great program, successful program that continues to grow and needs some room to grow with some flex space on the back of that building. So the school committee made a recommendation to the Facilities Master Plan Working Group, which consists of Lori Burzla, Steve Foster, Paul Hutchins, myself, Lynn Savage, who was here earlier, and Jim Stanford. As far as these public forums go, this is now the sixth one that we have done. And so people know, you don't, you certainly don't need to go to all of them. While we change it slightly depending on the location, we'll emphasize Kittredge at Kittredge and Atkinson at Atkinson, they're pretty much the same presentation. So all you need to do is C1. And if you can't make it to them, they're available. Cam is recording them and making them available on YouTube for people to watch at their leisure if they choose to do it that way as well. So after tonight, we have the ABECC tomorrow, tomorrow night, and then the youth center on December 1st. And those will be our fall public forums. We do intend to have some more. Jen Goldman mentioned earlier in public comment how important these projects are and how important it is to get as much information out to the public. We've been trying to do that as much as we can. We had the surveys to get their input. We had public forums back in the spring. We've had these public forums, and we'll have more coming out of the holidays leading up to town meeting. So we're certainly doing our best. We'll work on getting as much information out as possible. And these forums are helpful too because we get questions from the public. I'll skip to that one. Some of the ones that have come up already are now that we've been in a pandemic and we've seen how our schools rely on 21st century technology and the, you know, internet capacity and devices, to be sure that we include in the design of these projects the ability to provide that technology and to utilize it appropriately depending on the educational needs. We also were asked about continuing to partner, if there are any other possibilities for partnering with the Stevens Library. Dr. Gilligan certainly can certainly speak to how valuable that has been to date.
Yeah, I mean, there've been tremendous partners all along, and just like many of the organizations in the community we've really worked well with. But some of these comments to date about expanding partnerships have been really excellent, both at these forums from staff and from some of the parents and guardians there.
And the other thing that's come up, if you haven't seen the tents around town, then you just have been driving around town. They've been actually extremely helpful for us to provide more space for our students, get them outside more, eating under them, having some classes under them. I walked by Kittredge the other day, and our music teacher, who doesn't have a music room at Kittredge, but he was using a tent, and he had, you know, fourth or fifth graders doing their recorders, and I think he's a saint. I was glad I was walking by, but they've been extremely useful.
And the parents that are laughing have had students with the recorders practicing at home, I know.
Heart cross funds.
Heart cross funds, myself included.
So given that, we want to make sure that we include in the design useful outdoor space for schools. And how can we make sure our children will be impacted by these projects? One of the things, and I'm going to ask Melissa to speak in a minute, to the kind of timeline and what we've been discussing regarding the funding and timeline. But we certainly are trying to impact students as quickly and as many of them as we can. So discussions have included having the middle school upfront. Kittredge, we're going to depend, and Melissa will explain this, depend on MSBA's decision, where they are in the process. But we certainly are sensitive to impacting as many students as we can. And then that question comes up, when we have the financial plan and timeline? And that will be the focus of the public forums coming out of the holidays, and I'm going to ask Melissa to kind of speak to that.
Sure. So, you know, select woman, Beige was laughing at me earlier when I said I've run 10 different scenarios on how to fund these projects. I think one of the things that we've recognized is that over the next 20 or so years, we have about $72 million in debt capacity that opens up. We've been really strategic over the last couple of years to save debt capacity that had opened up so that it wouldn't get lost in the budget shuffle. And so that makes it really plausible and possible to do a lot of these projects without having a great impact on the taxpayer. And one of the reasons why we've run 10 different scenarios is because we have the MSBA pending, which is so exciting, where we leave so much burden, but it also just opens up even more possibility for us to do more projects early on. So as we're kind of moving through this chair's budget process, we know that we, our capital request was due last Friday, and Lynn has been very patient with me, as I've said, 95 more minutes. But I think one of the things that you'll see over the next couple of weeks is us coming out with the finance, a final financing plan. And it kind of will be the same timeline, but two different funding paths. I don't really know how else we do it at this point. So, you know, I had put a little bit of kind pressure on the MSBA, that December would be so much better for us because our warrant is open and we would be able to put an article on. But we'll get an article ready either way, and they've already committed to working with us on language, which I think is great. And as Mr. Millie was saying, you know, where the middle school stays at the front, but it's very possible that this year at town meeting, we may see the design for the middle school, the fire station, and Kittredge all at once. But then that work would kind of be spread out over a multi-year period. I think one of the kind of differences between Facilities Master Plan 1 and Facilities Master Plan 2 is that while both had kind of a similar number of projects, the cost of Facilities Master Plan 1 was so much less, right? You looked at over about $40 million, and this could be three or four times that. And so being really strategic in how we fund these so that we have the least impact possible is going to be really important as we move forward. So we have to bring our capital plan to you the beginning of December. By then, we'll have a funding plan in place with two different paths move forward. So it'll be soon.
Yeah, yeah, I was there when she slipped that in with the MSBA representative, and I was thinking to myself, that was really well done. Because it would be, it would be absolutely great if they could give us decision by December and, knock on wood, that it's positive for us. And I'll steal one of my own lines from a couple of other presentations where I said that we've done a lot of work over the last year and a half or so on these projects and putting together the recommendation and the final report. But even doing all that work and getting great feedback from the community, I wasn't always confident because I knew looming was this override vote or dead exclusion vote. And so I was concerned that we would be doing it and it might not happen. But then, a few weeks ago, having the conversation with Melissa that we can do this if we spread it out a little bit further and have, you know, much lower impact on the taxpayer, these could actually happen. I started thinking, these are going to happen. So I just have to have a shout-out to Melissa that the work that she's been doing on those, it's been horrendous, and I feel a lot better about the possibility of these happening.
Yeah, I think we're all really hopeful at this point, which is great.
We're hopeful.
I would say that, you know, when we embarked on Facilities Master Plan 1, although size-wise, obviously, as Melissa said, it was significantly smaller, but it was pretty daunting back then too to think about, you know, we're looking at a plan, we're going to build a new fire station, we're going to renovate this whole building, we're going to build a gym at Kittredge School, you know, everything you showed, and here we are, that most of that's in our review mirror now. We did it all. You know, through careful and thoughtful planning and budgeting, we were able to do it without any overrides and without any exclusions. And, you know, tomorrow, we're breaking ground on the senior center. So it's, you know, really significant that we were able to do that and with the support of town meeting. And I think the plan to, you know, present the designs, or go for the designs one year and the construction next year, works really well. And it just spreads it out, and I mean, it takes a little bit of time, but that's okay. I mean, like I said, like I said, look, it's already in our review mirror, most of those projects.
Yeah, I might be the only one who is on both Facilities Master Plan Committee 1 and the Working Group for 2. And so I know exactly what you're talking about. There were lessons learned, very valuable lessons learned from the first one that we can employ for this one. The last slide, you guys, this is nothing new to you guys. The school committee made the recommendation in September. Facilities Master Plan Working Group is working on having these public forums, working on the cost estimations, which are coming up soon. And then we'll continue coming out of the holidays with some more public education and support initiatives through January and May, leading up to town meeting. And then as Melissa mentioned earlier, that kind of, and Dick just mentioned as well, that kind of pattern that we had established where you go for design one year and construction the next. And it might not be, you know, one year right after the other. We have to spread them out in order to get it done, but we're familiar with that pattern now. And that's our presentation.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you guys coming and going through all of this with us. Like you said, it's going to be formative, and it's going to impact our town so much. So I think it's so important that we're all here together and that we're able to talk about it and that we can make it successful, just like Facilities Master Plan 1. So I will open it up to the board to see if there's any questions.
Well, I don't mind jumping in. I have some, a little familiarity with this. And again, it's really been exciting to see this come together and certainly hearing from folks, and I know the chair's, you know, has a full list of everybody who's kind of spoken up in the past few days saying, we're happy to see this out here. And so I think the community is starting to really tune into this. So I'm going to be one of your biggest advocates, but I'm also a marathon runner, and this is a marathon, which means you have to run harder and expect more challenges than you anticipate. But when you get to the end, it really feels good. So, in a lot of ways. So, first of all, again, bringing the parents in and having the service, I think, is really critical, right? Getting buy-in. But the other part of this is, you are the professionals, right? So you're the folks that, for all our feedback as amateurs, you know, we're all trying to figure out how to educate kids, you are the professionals. And one of the things that I hope we hear more of is really how these spaces will work better for our kids. And that's part of the connective tissue as I kind of look at all this, which is, you talk about the equity of this and trying to make it even. So my first big question is, how do we address that equity with timing? Because the more you stretch this out, the less equal it is among the schools and among the students. And I understand there's practical considerations. It's like fixing any problem, right? You can only do it one day at a time. But one of the things that I'm going to ask you, and I don't know if other folks would have the same sense, is can we look at ways that will move this as, facilitate this as quickly as possible? Because equity, again, gets, can be more realized more quickly if this works in unison. And what I don't see here is sort of that overarching view of when do we want this destination? And I understand we're still coming into the construction phase, we're all in the design phase, we're way back at the beginning. But to me, having that finish line in view and saying, hey, here's the time I want to get to it, or I hope to get to it with these conditions, and here's the scope, maybe it'll take this much money and this much time, or this much money and this much time, I think that's really important, having a true identifiable goal. And we're still early enough where we can have, I think, the negotiation, the discussion to weigh this. I think that's really important to help get further buy-in. Because it's one thing to say as parents, this is good, we need the new classrooms, ADA compliant, all that. It's another thing for people to say, we really want to lead that charge. We want to help our community, even those of us who, you know, my sons went, came into those portables when they were, you know, 20 years old and at the end of their life, and they're still there. And, you know, they're out of the system. I think there's still lots of parents in this, in this community whose kids are long out of schools, who could be real strong supporters of this, and it will affect our dollars. But it's also, it's what I'm getting in return. And we proved that with Master Plan 1, right? Where we said, we wanted to have that fire station, the police station. We needed to have these things in the town, and people were willing to invest in it. So I think it's developing more of what that finish line looks like, what are some of the timeline options, what are the speed trade-offs? And again, relative to dollars, Melissa, I know, more spreadsheets for you. But I think, but I think that's part of it. And the overlay on that, I see is, you were talking about comparable, you know, the standards, right, for space. And I think about one of the things that, Melissa, you've done, we've done for years, which is looking at comparable communities. How does what you're visioning match up with our peer group of schools? I mean, in reality, we're a community that is benchmarked. We benchmark ourselves, but also benchmarking externally, right? We look at that and what our tax rate is in terms of our level of town services. So when you look at the age of the facilities, you look at the square footage, the scope of recent projects, how does what you're looking at, what we're talking about, compare to that? That helps us also identify, really, are there more opportunities, are there less? Are we way ahead of the crowd? I think that's very important for people to understand in this community, when you talk about something of this scale. And at the end of the day, I think you get more people, and it just, I'm sorry to go on a tangent here, but I think you get more people signed up to, you know, to do the march, to do that long marathon, if they really can see what the whole thing is. And part of what's missing here, but which is a great opportunity, is really what that looks like. What's it, what are we going to have as a community when this all comes together? And why that mission is so critical? And so I see this as a great first step to get people aware, but I think it's these other pieces that can really get, move folks to being advocates for this. We're supporters, you want advocates for this. So, I don't know if, get anything out of that, but that's just my feel, just looking at this and what I see is the potential for us.
Yeah, I will say that's a lot to try to unpack. Although, let me try. So, we've been acutely aware that, and not just in this situation, but we see this in communication overall, people are not ready for the message until they're ready. You might be ready to give it, but if they're not ready to receive it, it doesn't do any good. So one of the things we've been cognizant of is the need coming out of the holiday, you know, leading up to town meeting to really have that push. And you talked about the, you know, finish line. And that's why the focus will be on what the timeline looks like, what the funding plan looks like. And that's why, that's what we're really working on, so that, that's what people are going to want to know. And that's what they'll be able to say, okay, I can support this because I don't think it's going to impact my tax bill that much, but there's a great return for the community and our students. So, as far as benchmarking, it's an interesting point, and it's a difficult one to say, okay, how do we compare with regards to our facilities? I can tell you that if MSBA chooses us for the program with Kittredge, then that's a really good indicator that we're not up to par with the other communities because they've chosen us to help get us, you know, over the finish line with this project. One of the things I said to them, that I thought was a good point, was that this Kittredge is the linchpin for us for all of these projects. Because if we get that big-ticket item funded, then it just helps us get all of the others done that are just as needy as this project is. And so we try to stress how important this project was to not just one. I mean, they're going to help us get four or five projects done with them approving us. So we're keenly aware of all that you're saying and trying to put our best foot forward.
I think one of the things too, that, just building off of that, that we've been really thinking about in these tense scenarios that I'm joking about, is that, you know, I've run them at doing them over a seven-year period, and I've run them doing them over a 14-year period, right? And if we do them quick, they cost the least, right? And if we do them over the longest period, they cost the most. And so it's an interesting value proposition, but if we do them quickly, the impact on the taxpayer is so much higher. I mean, it's two times as high, right? And if we do them quickly over that seven-year period, it will require us to go for multiple dead exclusions and operating overrides. And if we do them slowly, really, it won't be as impactful. We could get it down to almost a $7,000 impact over a 25, 35-year period. And so I think being patient on these types of projects is so hard because we all want to see the gratification, we all want to see, you know, the groundbreaking and the projects done. But in this instance, we may have to do it in a deliberate, sustainable way in order to be successful.
Can I just ask you a quick clarification? You said 25 years. You mean 25 years for funding, correct?
Funding, yes.
Okay, all right. I don't want people sitting at home thinking it's going to take us 25 years to build a... It's gonna take us 25 years to build and complete these because-
25 years of funding, but I mean-
It's striking that balance, and that, you know, certainly the MSBA plays a big role, and we, we have seen locally some of the MSBA projects that haven't been approved or haven't been voted through in communities, just recently, with one of our neighbors, it didn't pass. But we also know that on a big-ticket item like this, we know inflation is typically five, you know, percentage points a year. We know, right now, the cost of, you know, construction materials has been up, so there's a lot of factors that go into it. MSBA's certainly one of them. You know, if we could do them all, we didn't get in this situation overnight, and no one's more eager than the educator, than us as educational leaders in North End, to have the best place for our kids and our teachers here in town. But we also realize that we have to do it in a way that's sustainable. And people say, "Well, you know, when we do a lot of meetings, well, how is this gonna impact me at the Franklin School or the Thompson School, my kid's in third grade?" And I have to say, "Well, my son, you know, he's at the middle school. I know he's not gonna be impacted at this time." You know, and when was the best time to plant a tree? It was probably 20 years ago. When's the second-best time is today? And what I point out is, you know, when we did Facilities Master Plan One, I think it was 2013, might have been 2012, 2013 or so is when it started, you know, and we're just wrapping up Facilities Master Plan One. So, the ability, you know, to look out forward and, and get this done, and come out of the Facilities Master Plan Two, hopefully with the information from MSBA and an order and a funding plan, we're just as excited about it, too, in moving forward the process.
The other thing that-
The one thing, though, is, and we have no control, is the great interest rates right now, and we have no idea where they're gonna go. One quick question, refresh my memory. So, from time, it goes to town meeting for the initial design, you know, we gotta pay for the design work. Then we come back and vote to pay, you know, the next town meeting usually, what is it, about five years from the first town meeting to doors open?
For MSBA?
Well, I'm talking about just-
For a standard project?
For, for these types of projects.
I'd say designs a year. We do the construction docs, we go out to bid, is another three, four months. And then the actual construction usually for, if you're doing a full construction of a school, I'd say, look at you, but I'd say about two years for a full construction of a school. So, about three and a half years.
Okay, so I was off a little bit. More consistent, but that's a good thing.
But you, but you are right if you're talking about MSBA. That, that lengthens the process to about five years.
Although it puts pressure, it puts immediate pressure on, right? Because when you use MSBA funding, there's all kinds of rules you have to follow, and design funds have to be appropriated within 180 days. So, you know, it, it is something that gets the ball running a little bit faster, which is great, right? But, you know, it does make us change our pro forma a little bit.
And the other thing that Chris mentioned was about impacting our students in an equitable way. And while it's not the only variable, it certainly is a big part of the equation, as we discuss the timeline in the, in the plan, is how do we impact the most students equitably?
I mean, yeah, we've worked really hard to make best decisions around staffing, around equity, around, you know, support services, around instruction. But certainly, you know, you want to look at something like the middle school, there's just certainly no more space to lower class size, you know, there's not a space left. So.
And that's why in every scenario, the middle school is first.
Chair McDevitt?
Yep.
Um, I just really wanna just jump in and say how much I appreciate Mr. Nobley's comments, and how exciting it is that we, we come up with a statement. I don't know what the statement's gonna be, but something like, "We're gonna get to the moon before the end of this decade." You know, "We're gonna get to these projects by the, before the end of this decade." I think if we talk about comparing to other communities, and I have not looked, but if there are 58, or 56, whatever the number was, of projects that have applied to MSBA, it'd be pretty easy for us to take a look and see what those are. And my best guess is Massachusetts, at, at the time that we were building schools, a lot of communities were probably building schools because of the way that growth was happening at that time, right? Right after World War II, and the way communities were growing, and, and the GI Bill and all those other things. So, my guess is that we're probably in, in pretty equal territory with those who are looking to rebuild and have not yet done so. And then there are probably some communities who are certainly ahead of us on doing builds because of different experiences that they've had. And as far as equity, I think, you know, the faster we can get students into learning environments that are most appropriate and most conducive to their learning, and out-of-closets and hallways for doing their learning, the more students we have in excellent learning spaces, the more equity we have. So I, I absolutely agree that, as we can do it faster, great, but anything that we can do is, is only gonna increase equity, because we have the greatest in equity now, where we have only two of the newer schools that are, you know, 20 or so years old, and we have, you know, the other schools that are really behind that equity curve. So, thank you.
One more, one more comment, and I think this is a positive comment. You know, having, you know, Dick and Donnie and myself in particular, having some longevity with these projects, we do a really good job. We build on time, on or under budget, and not only that, the buildings don't fall apart within a year or two, as some of our people surrounding communities have had horrible problems. So I think that's one thing that we, we can be quite proud of, and that it speaks, I think, well to a good plan as well, that, you know, we'll, we'll get it done, we'll get it done right. But I agree with you that we need to have a lot of buy-in, and perhaps the longer plan is the one that will do it.
And I think that's a really important point that you're making, because you'll see when we release our financing plans, that not only are we kind of filling in what the years will be, but we're accounting for inflation and construction at 5%. We're including the operating costs for not only the buildings, but also for staffing, and we're accounting for inflation of 3% on those. And so when you're seeing our final pro forma built out, it's all in, so people know what to expect on day one. So for instance, if we add a wing to the middle school, we know that we're gonna have increased janitorial costs, increased electricity, increased heating costs, and we're accounting for all of that when we're doing this. That's all right. It'd be good.
Just along those same lines, one of the things that's important to MSBA is that they're going to invest in something that you're going to maintain. And so when they're going through our buildings, as old as they are, when they did the middle school visit and then Kittredge, both times they have been impressed with how well we're maintaining, maintaining an old building. So that helps as well. They certainly wanna see that they're going, we're going to maintain if they're gonna to invest.
Well, that speaks to you. Thank you.
Melissa, thank you all for coming. It's really exciting to be sitting here with all of you and talking about this. It's just been that, out in the ether for a while, so. And thank you all for your hard work up to this point. I have some really, I think, I hope are easy questions, but I'm curious if teachers and administrators were included on the subcommittee or not, and what the opportunity will be for them to participate in the moving forward.
So, we wanted a representative from every school on the subcommittee, and we got that. We didn't get it with staff, although it was put out to staff. We went with what we got for volunteers. But they've also been included in the, as we talked about, the surveys and the public forums that were, have been held. And they've been attending some of these public forums as well.
Can you go into a little bit about what will happen in the design phase? Like, how is that gonna work? When is that decision made? Like, how do you figure out who is going to do the design part of the project? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so purchasing law, you know, dictates how you end up with a design firm. You have to do a request for qualifications for that, right? Which we'll do, with the understanding that we under, we will provide them with what we're looking to do, and then hire the firm, and they'll design to meet those leaks.
You put it out to bid, like anything else that we have to do.
Yeah, it's just different. It's not like low price for that particular service, it's qualifications.
Okay. It's just important things for people at home to understand about the process, I think. We'll also have an owner's project manager as well, because our project's over a million dollars. And then, because we're using, or hoping to use, MSBA funding, we will have statutory requirements for involvement for design as well, so we'll need to have a school building committee, which our bylaws call for as well. So, there should be lots of people with their fingers in the design, which is good.
It's just, and it's just a little different with MSBA, let's hope that we have to do it this way.
Yes.
In that, they provide you with, I think it's three, design firms and OPMs to choose from, from a, a pre-approved list.
Okay. Let's see. So can you, I, this is probably gonna be really hard to answer, but-
You said they were all easy.
I know, but, but I know I'm asking for a little, a little too ahead of the game, I think. Can you go into a little more about what renovate is? Like, I get that it's a heating system, and like, but is there aesthetics involved with, I mean, just a little bit more?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And it's pretty much, it's gutting the existing buildings.
That's what I-
And so, that, it's the only way to get to the systems?
Yes.
But then at the same time, now that you've done that, you get to put new in place.
That's exactly the answer.
Certainly, there's a school, a school building committee, but, you know, being part of the high school portion as a staff member, that's really critical where, you know, staff input comes in and the administrative input, because they know the building-
It is, incredibly.
Like anything, and that's the most important part, is when you, when you do that, when it's that time in the process, is critical.
You, we talked about learning from Facilities Master Plan One. We also learned from the Bradstreet, where we didn't provide enough input opportunities for the staff, and it showed.
Yeah.
And the size of the gym is one example.
To be honest, that's what I have in my head, right?
Yep.
Is like, that project, and I know that the things are different, and, you know, the plan will be, will put the plan in place in a different way, so I don't foresee we'll end up in that situation again. But, one of the things that I, I, I mean, I'm completely in support of this, the only sad part for me is that my kids will be long gone before it comes, but that's okay. It's still a benefit to our entire community. But I think, like, just, you know, the next step for me is, like, I want to feel so supremely confident so that I can sell it to the world that this is the best plan. So anything you can do, sort of, to help us all understand and feel that way, and feel supremely confident, so that we can shout it from the rooftops, you know, that's what we wanna do. So, I look forward to sort of, as the details are flushed out, you sort of continuing to reassure us that this is, like, why this is the right, the right plan.
Yep.
And I know it's, that's a multifaceted, very complicated process, but I think, you know, me being able to carry on a conversation with anybody I'm talking to and say, you know, "This is how this plan came to be, and why it's the best thing for our schools," is gonna be really critical.
Absolutely.
I look forward to being able to do that.
If I could just jump in on those lines, I mean, when we did Master Plan One and many other projects since then, the website presence was huge. You know, and, and I was so impressed tonight when Bill walked everybody through how to get to that class, that specification, you know, he did it live and showed people where to go. And when we did Facilities Master Plan One, people used to call and say, "How are we doing this? How is this happening?" And I could just easily point them to the website, and they could see everything right there, the breakdown, how, you know, what year it started, what year it went through. So that transparency is really important, and to continue to, to post these presentations in, in both the school and the town websites, and Melissa's already showing me where it is. And just to be able to-
And I know this is a hard subject to reach, but for me, it's like, we need to be targeting the preschool, like, like, just the general public of anybody with young kids who aren't even in school yet. So anything we can do to help with that. Did those surveys and stuff go out to just the school distribution list, or did they go out to?
Townwide.
Everybody, and that's why, you know, that's why we're having one at the senior, we had one at the senior center, we had one at the youth center. But more importantly, even the ABECC, you know, we're anticipating, we wanna hit and connect with families that their children, they just moved to North End.
Yes, that's what, I feel like we should pull-
And they say, "Why, you know, why'd you move to North End?" Well, we moved here for the schools.
They work with the registry.
It's a great community. We're a tremendous community.
Pull those, oh, sales.
But we also, too, wanna educate, you know, folks, too, that, that, as some of you have mentioned, their students have graduated 20 years ago. They're still members of the community. This is a community project.
It is, and it's a benefit to all of us.
And it, you know, it's going to be so impactful for decades, and really, it's, you know, the moving parts, that's the hard part, waiting on MSBA in December.
Well, that hopefully will be worth the wait, that's what-
Yeah. And then, you know, that's why Melissa's running so many different scenarios, and working so closely with her, I'm really confident about us moving this forward.
That space analysis is really, really supremely helpful, but is their square footage recommendation based on class sizes, or what is it based on? Is it based on overall school size?
I got that question, 'cause I'm like, why is the art room the same size?
Just why would a school that is, you know, has 500 kids-
Right.
Need the same size art room as a school that has 200?
So, yeah, it's not based on the school size. The, there are certain areas that, like a cafeteria would be based on how many students are in the, in the school, right? But an art room or a music room, you're going to have a class in there. And, and this is-
Based on class size.
What the size is recommended for a class.
A class, but of what class size? Like, of 25, 30, 20?
Of what we want.
Of whatever.
Our lower class size.
Yes, that's what-
But it could also be that there's two art rooms, for example, right? So, I mean, if you're talking about, you know, a school that's, you know, four, 500 students, right? There might be two art classes, right? So the size of the room is still there, at whatever, I think it was, I, I don't remember, I think it was 900 square feet, right? There could be two-
It's a thousand, yeah.
A thousand, okay.
And there's recommendations, right? They're coming from, is it from the MSBA that gives the recommendations, right? So like, all of that's formulated in, right? So it's not just like a willy-nilly, "We think it should go here, or this should be the right space." It's coming from the MSBA, so it's, it's standard, it has to be that. That's like, that's what it needs to be.
My question was more like, how did they get? Based on how people teach today. Thank you. Don't forget, these people do know what they're doing. No, yeah, it's curiosity, not, yeah. They, they do teach, so.
And do they have a recommended, recommended class size, the MSBA, like?
We told them what, we're at the-
For the class room size, so they're not saying, "Oh, you should have 20, or you should have 22." They're understanding that schools nowadays have a range, let's say between 20 and 24, and this should be the class size.
Okay.
You mean square footage or class size, right?
Square footage, right.
That's what was my question, is the square footage based on predicted class sizes, or is it based on something else?
I think it's a formula that goes for both, based on, yeah.
Right, the average around the state. Yep.
You know what, just, you know, for a minute, it kind of piqued a thought of mine. I think, too, the fact that we're not tearing everything down and starting new, that really takes people back, especially, you know, the older population who, they don't understand why are we tearing, so that we're working with what we have and making it better. And I think that certainly helps the argument that-
Right.
We're not throwing everything away, you know, we're not a throwaway town, where this is just gonna throw it away and start all over. I think that, from years of experience, again, former selectmen, Donald Stewart and Dicky and, and even Chris, we've been all doing this a, a long time, that's the first thing that they would say, "Well, what do you, it's, the building's made out of brick, why are we turning this down?" So I think that helps this a lot.
You're absolutely right. MVG and their assessments, you know, we've heard that expression, "The bones are good," right? So for Franklin Atkinson, the bones are good, so let's work with what we have and just renovate, and, you know, put in the new systems and update. But Kittredge was the one that, you know, we felt needed to be replaced, and they agreed. So we're not, you know, if it's, if it's solid, then we, can you work with it? And if it's not, then that's when we make the recommendation to do something new.
Is there any concern that by the time we proceed through these projects, that the bones may not be so good anymore?
No, they take that into account, no. Absolutely. And, and in their assessment, you know, if, if in the renovation we need to do something that makes it last even longer, then they'll do that. But no, they, they absolutely take that into account, that you're looking for a long-term But no, they, they absolutely take that into account that you're looking for a long-term investment.
Demo and.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, I see a day, all day and day out, like as soon as we start ripping off the finishes, you know, see, anything that needs to be replaced, you can address at that time.
Absolutely.
And that's a good thing that you're gonna, you're gonna expose those things and be able to address those things.
Right.
That's great.
But we have a lot of schools built out of brick and Sammy block and steel and stuff.
They're not going anywhere.
I think we've been good stewards of doing the best we can, maintaining our schools with what we have. And, and there's no one more creative than our, our teachers, our staff, our principals of creating space. Because, you know, it's not just the classrooms, it's the complexity in which some of these other spaces that are required now with English learners and special education and how it's just changed. And it, it's a significant change even from 20 years ago. You know, the, the, the populations and percentages have increased and, um, the complexities of some of the disabilities in which we see and some of the other services in which we have to provide are much different than they were even 20 years ago.
Well, and I, I found it really interesting that the school capacity subcommittee had done a ton of research and a lot of studying and put together, if you've not been to that website, you're looking for a website, I spent hours and hours going through incredible information. And the thing that still blows my mind is back in 2006, it was recommended that Kittredge really shouldn't continue. Okay. And so here we are, it's talking about planting the tree. So, um, you know, I, I think we need to keep in mind that we can't do everything, but that's been recommended since 2006. That, gosh, that really is kind of at the end. And now we're at 2021, so.
And I think one quick thing, just to Rosemary's point, I mean, yes, the buildings are old, but they're maintained.
Yes.
To the best ability that they are. And you could not walk into any of our buildings and think, oh my God, they're disgusting, they're dirty, the walls are falling down. Like I went into Kittredge and I hadn't been there since my youngest graduated three years ago and we clapped her out. And I walked downstairs and there used to be a men's room there. And it's a reading room right now, right? It's reading and intervention, right? It, it used to be a men's room. Now, in your head, you're thinking, oh my God, is the toilet in the sink still there, right? Like it's not, it's a, it's a clean room, right? Um, and you wouldn't necessarily know it unless you kind of knew a little bit of the history of the school. It still presents very well. It's just 110 square feet or something like that. And it's, you know, for a teacher and one or two students in terms of that intervention. But the, the building is still maintained as well as it can based upon it being 70 plus years old.
And that does cost money differently.
Right.
Yeah. And I'm proud of the, the staff and Jim's team that maintains it because when we talk about benchmarking and standards, like over the years, we've been, you know, lower in terms of staffing for some of the custodians. And they really take pride in their, you know, particularly the, you think about the elementary schools, the day custodian and everyone knows who that person is and they play a big role in that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I, I know you have other business to attend to tonight.
No, 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 I, um, I think you guys, this is fabulous for us.
Yes.
Um, I think it was great to have this conversation. Um, it's a big project ahead of us. You know, I think, I'm not your audience, right? I know why we need to do it. I've got kids in the school system. You know, it's reaching out to the, the residents that have, don't have students in the school, who have graduated, who don't yet have them in the school system and why this is so important and how much it's going to form our, um, future for our students and for our town and for our residents. Um, and I think it's just important that we continue to work together and get that message out. And I think we can all be advocates for this project moving forward and we all look forward to working together on this. And it's very exciting. So I can't wait to see it moving forward. Um, is there any comment from the floor?
Sorry, I'm picking it all up now. Not really. Uh, Chris Allen, um, through Belmont Street, also Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. And so many questions, so many questions, but I'll only ask actually one. And, um, first of all, I wanted to say that when I was on the school committee, one of the things that we asked our superintendent of repeatedly when we talked about the schools was instead of like, how much is everything going to cost? Can you tell us what the schools need? And so it's just a wonderful thing to hear simply, what do the schools need? This is what the schools need. So I applaud you. And it's just, I mean, I remember Chris, right? We used to talk about it all the time, you know, what do we need? What do we need? And then maybe we can figure out how to get it paid for. So this is fantastic. Um, but another point, um, as a member of the finance committee, I don't speak for the committee, but I know this is something that will come up, is, um, I know, um, Ms. Rodriguez, what you did, uh, address how much it would cost with these buildings to add staff and to add supplies, et cetera. It'll go in the formula. However, I do note that the formula isn't really the same thing as building a building, which is kind of sort of a one-time cost. Uh, people, staffing, uh, they are not. They will definitely affect your school budget in a considerable way, year after year. So, um, I know, I'm certain that the finance committee would really like some sort of analysis, some sort of staffing, population analysis, that really seems it would come from the school side. Seems like this is a little different, the, the joint effort of how the town funds the schools. But in the end, we know how it works out is Melissa, you have a budget. This is how much we can put to the schools. The schools say, this is how much we need. And then once it gets to you, you do what it is you need to do. So with this renovation, with this significant expansion of all our schools, that is a significant expansion of personnel. Um, a lot of teachers, nurses, special ed, janitorial staff, as you said. So that's just one thing I'd like to see, um, probably within your next iteration of, of reports. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Oh, Commander Chair, that, that will be included in our final report. We've been working collectively, um, on the operating costs. Um, so we, they actually had made, they'd done their seven-year plan, started as a five-year plan and then COVID happened. Um, and we were able to tie a lot of their needs to space, right? And so as the space grows, the needs come. Um, and so we, we do have all of that and that will all be released as part of our financing plan. And of course, uh, we will go to the finance committee. I was able to speak briefly with the finance committee at their last meeting about kind of where we stood. I had come right from one of the, um, forums, so it was fresh in my mind. Um, but we will be at the finance committee because obviously one of the steps that we'll be having, um, moving forward is that we will be at town meeting. Um, and while there will not be a vote on the, um, plan generally, the plan will be presented as part of our request for design funding. So we will be at the finance committee probably many, many times over the next few months, um, getting them up to date on what we'll be doing.
And I would just add that, um, the multi-year plan that Melissa referred to was, was done with these projects in mind. Um, and as, as Chris is saying, all that now has to happen is depending on the final timeline, we just need to kind of tweak when they occur.
Yeah.
So that they kind of interweave together, right?
Right, exactly. And you can see that intent, you know, even in the five-year plan we put out a couple of years back. You know, a lot of communities don't put out a staffing plan multiple years, they just do a yearly budget. But we had the middle school in there anticipating a middle school, you know, addition, you know? So those are the things, depending on the order, um, that we'll have to look at. But one plug Dick mentioned, I'd love to direct everyone to the website, northandoverhawkeschools.com. The featured news is about when the forums are and there's also a link to the sub-capacity, school sub-capacity, the school capacity information. Yeah, sorry, that's a tongue twister. Um, and you could spend hours on it. There's so much information there. But it's right above the fold on our main page, um, and right where it says featured news, so.
Is it on our town?
It is. If you go to our homepage, we have right at the top under, um, under the giant COVID update. Um, under there is facilities master plan two website, right on the homepage.
May I ask, uh, you know, we're used to this nomenclature. But if I'm somebody that's trying to go, okay, what's happening with the schools and what's master plan for, I don't know, right? I mean, so it's great what we have there, but I, I might ask that we think about a way to simplify somebody's attention to that and drive them through it because as much as we want folks to understand, you know, the, or the facilities master plan, if right now what we're really talking about is these sort of components, let's see if we can make that more visible to.
Like bulleted.
Yeah, this is what it is, right?
What is it? Two people have attention for two minutes or something like that, right?
It's, but again, when we use, when we use terms, again, that folks, we want them to learn and understand, but they've got to get there.
Right.
They just don't know what the door is, so just.
I would say, Chris, that this is a, this is going to be a collaborative effort. And it's, it's not a case of too many chefs spoiling the broth. I think the more people that are, you know, keeping an eye on things and if you're the person that has that in mind and keep reminding us, oh, make sure you address that, then we're all going to benefit.
I appreciate that point, Jim. Cause you're right, it is the collaboration and we all have something to add and I think we can get there successfully if we all do that. So I appreciate that. Um, so I think if you can.
Yep, absolutely. We'll, we'll do a motion to adjourn, um, in, in a moment. Uh, the only last thing I just want to end on is we do not embark on any level of this type of facility plan without the collaboration that we have, um, between the select board, between FinCom, who is here today, without the incredible relationship, uh, between Dr. Gilligan and Melissa Murphy Rodriguez. Without the, the community, without us working together for the benefit of the community, um, this doesn't happen. And this doesn't happen in a lot of towns. Um, people ask why we live here. Um, it's the schools, but it's the community and it's our sense of working together for this. Um, and so I hope I can speak for the entire committee, but thank you for having us here tonight. Thank you for sharing your meeting with us. Thank you for your continued partnership. Um, it, it means the world to the community and that, I don't know, class of 2030, uh, that, that's kind of coming up and where they are. So, uh, so maybe 2030, I don't know. That's, that sounds so scary right now. Um, but with that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Uh, motion by Mrs. Mabely.
Second.
Second by Ms. Petrowski. I will do a quick roll call. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitsky, Ms. Mabely.
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski, the chair of the Justice Five-Oh, we are adjourned. Uh, back to you, select board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You've been so much for coming.
Madam Chair, can I make a comment, please?
Sure.
Donald Store, two Prospect Street. It seems to me you need a, a way of jump-starting this whole project. And Mr. Mealy encountered that on that at the beginning, the Foster Farm School property. It's been out there for 30 years. It's going to be worth at least $2 million right now. And to me, that'd be a, a great way to start the whole project off with. It let, I mean, there's no, there's no plans to build a foster farm school. I haven't heard that since they had the override. So I mean, to me, that would be a way to get the whole process started and it's just something to think about. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Doc. Nobody ever wants to stay. Nobody ever wants to stay.
He's coming back.
Welcome back, dude.
Back to the.
He's back.
Wow, you moved far away.
I thought I'd give you a little bit of room.
Actually, the, the town energy used to sit where I'm sitting, to the side of the.
In my last community, I did sit next to the chair.
And it does help the chair with, you know, it's very helpful. So I've been.
In my last community.
Rosemary, you're saying we're not helping? Is that what you're implying?
No, but if you need to slide in one direction, that would be fine.
Then Dick will have all this room.
So, well, I know it's late, but I think that that was so important to, for us to have that. So I appreciate again that the school committee was here, um, Dr. Gilligan and Dr. Mealy, and that we were able to have that discussion. So, um, and again, very exciting moving forward. Um, we also, we don't get a ton of emails all the time, but we did.
Oh, we can't.
We got, we did get, um, 12, I believe, emails, um, in response to this school, um, presentation and all of, in support of it. Um, so we did get emails from Lisa Ritchie, Kim Cooperstown, Tamira Carlson, Jen Dubey, Leah, Lawrence, Celine, Michelle, Phil, Phil, Deborah Smith, Parma Setchuwa, Mike Consoli and Jim Thorne. Um, so we did all receive those. Um, so it's good to hear from the community and please continue to, um, reach out and let us know your thoughts and, um, moving forward through this process because it will be a lengthy process. Um, so we are actually going to skip over the governmental reports today. The Merrick Valley Planning Commission is going to come to our next meeting. Um, and we will move on to, uh, we did the.
Madam Chair, we want to take licensing out of order. I think they, are you here for licensing?
We understand.
Let's try not to make it any more painful, right?
My apologies. We will, I will take a motion to move into licensing.
Move to. Second.
Who, is that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in licensing and, uh, the only thing that we've got is a application for change of management and change of officers at Sunjay, uh, Inc., DBA Town Market at 260 Winter Bath. And?
Good evening. Jill Man here on behalf of Sunjay Inc. The applicant in connection with this request, um, basically it's simply one of the partners got bought out by the other partner and now it's 100% owned. So we are required to let this board know that that change has been had. Plus, the old partner was the manager who is Niteh Patel, Nitesh Patel. And, um, now it's Mukesh Patel who will be the manager. So, um, I did deliver you a fairly comprehensive package and with Mr. Patel's credentials and then all of the other documentation is required by the A B C C. Thank you.
So in our packet, um, we have this doc, documents, uh, including no, no issues from the building department, fire or police. All looks complete here. Um, I don't know if, um, you'd like to make any additional statement?
Uh, my name is Mukesh Patel. I'm from Middleton.
Uh huh.
And we're running the business almost last, how many years? Four years?
Four years.
Four years. No issue, no problem.
Good, good. Are there any questions from the board? Well, as it's an ongoing.
Right there, it's coming your way. It's like this big.
This is just an exciting.
I'm sorry, I'm going to be the girl that go, ooh, it's like this big.
It looks like a sensible.
Oh, you'd have to.
It does.
So Melissa said you're a clock, say clock.
Thank you. Take her in the box. Yeah. You know, but for this big, to this big.
Wow.
It's like being at home.
Does any of that impact the ability of this gentleman to give?
As long as it wasn't a dress rock, he's good.
Are we all good?
We are good.
All right, I'll, I'll hear a motion then and let the, let this proceed, so.
I will move that the Select Board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application for change of manager and change of officers since from Sunjay, uh, doing business as, uh, Town Market at 260 Winthrop Avenue.
A second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And good luck with your building project. I was on quite a few school building projects and I know. Good luck. It looks like it's going to be a great, great project.
Thank you very much.
And Madam Chair, the gentleman in the back is here for new business item C.
Okay.
I just need a motion to.
Oh, sorry. I was rushing us along. I apologize.
Motion to adjourn, I mean, motion to. I just had on that one, Steve, did you hear that? And Dawn's not even here anymore.
Oh, okay.
It's the first time I've ever made a motion to adjourn. Motion to move out of licensing.
A second.
All right, all in favor? All right, all right, back to it.
All right, we will move on to the Cambridge Sports Union, um, request to use Milk Street, Johnson Street, Ray Street and Chestnut Streets on November 14th. If you'd like to speak to it, you are more than welcome to shake the microphone.
Uh, sure.
My name's Eli Galladet from Andover, uh, and I'm part of the Cambridge Sports Union. Um, we've been running this, uh, roller ski race, which is a training race for the upcoming Nordic ski season. It's tradition that's dating back, I think, 31 years. Jamie Doucette ran it for most of that time and I'm taking it over from him. And, and we'd love to be able to use, um, that set of streets that I mentioned in the application um, for one hour next Sunday for this purpose.
I think everything's in order. We have, um, the police department, the fire department have all given us favorable recommendations. Does anybody have any questions?
How many participants are you expecting?
We, probably around 20, possibly up to 30.
I've never actually seen it. I know we approve it every year and I live right in that area and I've never seen it. So I'm going to have to.
We come on by and, uh, yeah, we'd love to have some, some fans.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Move approval. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
We will see you. Um, we will move on to the request of the festival committee and the North Andover Police Association permission for permission to use Main, Elm, Water and Sutton Streets on Saturday, November 27th for the annual Santa parade. I am sure we are, everybody is really excited to have this back there. Um, again, favorable action from the police department, fire department. Um, I did read something in there about they're hoping people were returning from throwing candy.
From vehicles.
Yeah, from throwing the candy from.
Yeah.
Vehicles. But do you want to speak to it a little bit, rest of the hair?
Um, other than, yeah, it's, you know, that I've been working with some of the people on the festival committee and, you know, Lieutenant E J Foles, who's been doing it for quite a while and they do a wonderful job. Um, so it's a, it's a little bit of a struggle because of COVID. We're sort of just whipping this up together. And as a result of that too, because of the constrained time, that we, we also hope to have a little bit of a nod to our 375th and not having the time nor. and not having the time nor money to put together two parades. We said, let's pull it and have a little, you know, and our jolly old elf can say happy birthday, North Andover, and happy holidays and just, so it should be fun. I think the fun thing is that we'll all be there in celebration.
Yep.
And that's the most important thing. But if anybody would like to contribute to this event, they are taking donations, we're having a little bit of a difficult time finding bands because they were COVID down as well, but if, if somebody wants to sponsor a band or put together a float or a whole host of other things, certainly give EJ Folds a call and we just want to have some fun, you know, and.
It'll be nice to see the street lined again with families and.
Yeah.
I received just as many inquiries about the Santa parade this week as we received emails about the school project, so.
Just get back to all those people and say.
Yes.
Do you have a fun idea?
Just jump in.
And if you're looking for a theme, theme towards the 375th would be great.
I will take a motion, or I will entertain a motion.
I will move approval.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, pass this five-oh. Looking forward to the Santa parade this year. We are moving on to surrendering our liquor license for the Stevens Estate.
We know what, we know where she stands.
Melissa's very excited.
I know, she got her EBCC approval this week and then we put this on the agenda and I was like, are we good? So yes, they're fine, they'll have their license remission in the next two to three days and their next event with a license is not until December 4th, so all is well, but this is very exciting.
Yeah.
Do you need us to sign something?
I probably will. Laurie's not here today, so I don't have my usual organization, but I will, I will grab this, you, I actually am going to need you to sign a super easement, too, so we'll have you sign.
Okay.
Just a quick question, any sense of how, how the bookings are going there? Now, I know it's like, it's early, early, early in the preseason.
Yeah, so they're, they're not taking on very much during this winter because they're planning on doing renovations.
Right.
But they're doing a lot of bookings for fiscal year '22 already, oh, fiscal year, next fiscal year. They, they are on a very different calendar than we are, so it's a little confusing, but they've got a lot of things coming up for '22 and they have all their new pricing out, they have a brand new website, looks amazing, and so I think they've got a lot going on, which is great.
Yeah, you know, Madam Chair, I might, might ask that at some point, maybe this spring, kind of before they really kick into it, maybe have them come back and do a little, little update, tell us what it's like, get, help us get the message out.
Maybe pack up community programs that they're looking to implement or host or.
Yes, so we'll meet with them in the January timeframe to go over the community calendar for next year, and then they did tell me that they want to have an event, one of the welcome event in, in April, to show everybody what they've completed, so they're, they're really excited.
And in May, we will hope to have the 375th Gala, which will be May 13th. It's a Friday. We figured there wouldn't be too many weddings on Friday, the 13th, so that we would take advantage of that.
Yeah, great.
All right, excellent. I will entertain a motion to surrender the Stevens Estate.
Move that the Select Board surrender the liquor license for the Stevens Estate.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we no longer hold the liquor license to the Stevens Estate. Let's see, we are moving on to a sewer pump station easement agreement with 1600 Osgood. This is for the sewer extension, correct?
This is for the sewer extension. So basically what this, which we just bid out and got prices on and are looking forward to start in the next few weeks, and basically what this does is it grants us the authority to build the pump station as well as the access that we'll need in order to have the easement over the property to get to the pump station if we need to fix it. And so this was what we had negotiated early on, if you remember correctly, we had a three, a three, three-party agreement between the state, Hillwood, and ourselves to pay for the sewer, and it's finally coming to fruition, so very exciting.
Any questions or discussions? No? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move that the Select Board accept and sign the sewer pump station easement agreement for 1600 Osgood Street.
Did I miss it?
Second.
Did we miss?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I skipped over our vote to release the legal opinion regarding the consul on EJ.
Sure.
I'll speak to that.
So without talking about easing, it's in the opinion since it has not been released yet, we've had some discussion, not unusual, with the consul and, at the consul on EJ, kind of trying to figure out what their authority is, what they have control over, just the role of the committee. And so knowing that, I reached out to KP Law and asked for legal opinion regarding the consul and agent's authorities, that they would have it, in order for me to release it to them, I need you to release it and make it public.
I think that's a, I think that's a really helpful because they are a very engaged body and obviously with the senior center coming along, we want them involved, but we don't want to step on toes either, right? I think that's important. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we release the, the opinion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we will release that, does that get posted on?
We'll put that on the internet tomorrow and share it with the Chair.
Excellent, thank you. All right, I think that that's it for new business. We are going to move on to consent items. We have a surplus, we have surplus vehicles from the police department and I did ask Madam Town Manager for some clarification because you may see that they're, I don't know, to me, they're newer vehicles, but there is a threshold for mileage on them and because they patrol the town so much, they reach that limit pretty quickly. So thank you for that clarification. We've also got a request to surplus a stretcher and donate to the Lawrence General Hospital from the fire department and we will be accepting donations to the library from Mary Walmsley, Patricia Williams, Ann Louie Erickson, and Suzanne Hartwell, so thank you so much for your support of the library. Again, we can't do it without the volunteers and those that continue to support those services in town. So I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items.
Move that the Select Board approve and accept all consent items.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I will move on to approval of our open session minutes from October 25th, 2021. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or amendments to those? I will entertain a motion to accept those.
I would move approval.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We don't have any old business, our town manager.
Just lock down on us.
That's bigger issues.
She fixed the clock, she took care of the, the.
Oh, she stopped doing the plumbing.
She got the bug.
She got the bug, yeah. We directed.
We get out the financing, we have to plan, too.
Why should it use this?
Oh, she's back.
No, I just want to encourage people to please come to, and I'm sure one of you is going to mention this during your updates as well, to our veterans' event on Thursday. The parade is kicking off at 10:00 AM.
At the parking lot.
First to me.
First to me, other than that, it's business as usual, lots of things just going on.
It's supposed to be a great one, though.
Supposed to be great on Thursday, yes, we're excited. We're excited to all gather together, so that'll be great.
Is there any more? Well, I was going to mention that tomorrow, we get to put shovels in the ground at the senior center for the groundbreaking.
We have shovels. We have some shovels and some hard hats, I've been told. I haven't actually seen them, but they'll be there, so.
So no need to do. It's an exciting.
We've got lots of people coming, it'll be great.
Oh, yeah, I would imagine.
Lot of people excited about this, so.
And the only, another major thing happening on Thursday is that our schools are hosting a vaccine clinic for our students, specifically the five to 12 group got approved, so if you want to go get back, get your children vaccinated, then go down to the high school between two and six.
Is that the family, it's a family vaccine clinic?
It's family, anybody can come.
Yeah.
And if the spots are filled, because it's filled twice now.
It is filled.
Okay, please let us know because we'll open up more spots. Very exciting, we've already filled it twice.
So for the adult vaccines?
Anyone can come.
So is it the booster?
You can get your booster or.
Do they have Moderna?
They have all three.
They do have all three because I heard that, I can't, I've heard that Moderna's been a little hard to get.
We have all three available. You can get your first dose. If you haven't had, if you're not vaccinated at all, come on down, get your first dose. You can get your child's dose or you can get any of your three booster doses. All are available. Yep, so please do come. And again, I'll, I'll check on it, I know it's Saturday morning, I had a load more, we had a load more on, so we're very excited, a lot of people have signed up. Yeah.
Any other Select Board updates?
No, I want to thank all of my colleagues for supporting what is about to kick off as the names dance challenge, so stay tuned to see what. Starting with the chef. I want to talk to you as much as I can.
Just the board.
Thank you.